Right.
I'd like to welcome each of you to this St. Cloud Council Workshop this Wednesday, June the 19th. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny. Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Askew.
Here.
Councilmember Trace.
Here.
Our first item is our solid waste consultant report, and I believe Mr. Booz is here. We'll jump right into it. Bart?
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. This is a report that we've been working on for around the last six months or so. It is in draft form, so certainly we want to receive any comments that you guys have tonight, and we'll address those for a final report here in the next few weeks. Again, my name is Bart Booz. I'm a senior project manager for Wright Pierce. Wright Pierce has a continuing services consulting agreement with the city, and when this particular assignment came up, it made sense for us to be involved in this, in part because we have IWCS Innovative Waste Consulting Services on our team, and they're one of the premier landfill design research firms in the state of Florida. They've done a ton of these kind of rate studies in the past, so it was great to have us onboard. I want to have Jim come up and go through the presentation, and if you guys have questions along the way, feel free to ask those. There's a lot of detail in the presentation. We can go through all the detail if you'd like, or if you'd like us to skip to the chase, we certainly could do that as well, but we'll leave it up to you folks. Thank you.
Thanks again. Like Bart said, I'm Jim Wally. I'm a project engineer for IWCS Innovative Waste Consulting Services. We do, like you mentioned, a lot of solid waste work. This is kind of familiar territory for us, and we're excited for the opportunity to discuss the results we found. So I want to go over the overview, what we're going to talk about. There are, like Bart said, a lot of slides, so we can go in as much detail as little as you'd like. First, we want to kind of introduce the background of the project. We kind of framed everything around some core questions that we know the city was interested in answering about the solid waste program. So we'll discuss those questions, discuss some population and waste projections that we used to determine our results, look at the solid waste program expenditures and revenues, look at where the program is currently, and then we use that for a rate projection, just to discuss what the rate would need to be in the future, then discuss any changes to the solid waste program the city is considering and the impact of that on rates, and then finally, the summary and our recommendations to those questions. So currently, the city of St. Cloud owns and operates a waste collection fleet and a transfer station. Those are the two kind of big cost centers and revenue centers for the city for the solid waste program, so that's what we're going to discuss in a lot more detail. And again, those are the revenue and cost centers for the city. It currently does not have a capital improvement or equipment replacement fund, so we'll discuss the impact of that on rates and the impact of adding that. And then, again, capital improvement projects vary from year to year a lot, and so we will discuss some strategies for stabilizing that if the city would like to consider that. So again, the questions that we looked at about the city's solid waste program, the first question is, what will be the expected future expenditures for the five-year study period? So fiscal year 2019, 2020 through 2023, 2024. The next question is, what rates will be necessary to raise the revenue to cover those future expenditures? And then, the third question's kind of got a lot of sub-questions. What will be the impacts of some different changes to the program? So, one, a rate increase that would cover future capital expenditures to kind of stabilize that. Two, privatization of a waste collection or transfer station operation. So we looked at what would be the potential impact of privatizing. There's a few different ways to estimate that that we covered. We wanted to mention upfront, we found that there did not appear to be a benefit, and we'll go into why that is in the future. And then, the next question is, what would be the impact of creating an impact fee to cover the costs incurred for adding new customers as the city expands? And then finally, what would be the impact if unincorporated Osceola County waste is diverted from the transfer station? So unincorporated Osceola County currently brings a lot of waste, nearly half of all the waste the transfer station receives. So if that were diverted, we wanted to look at the impact of that to the program and how the program could adjust for that. So we're going to jump into the first question. What's the current state of the program, including expenditures for fiscal year, and what do we expect that to be in the future? So in order to estimate what the future state of the program will be, we looked at historic and projected population for St. Cloud and for Osceola County, the historic waste generation rate for the St. Cloud and for the transfer station, and then the historic revenue and expenditures for the program. So this is where our starting point for the waste collection section of the waste program in St. Cloud. So currently, there are about 17,000 to 18,000 residential bin customers. There is about 17,000 cubic yards of commercial dumpster capacity, and about 300 commercial bins. So this is sort of the collection component of the solid waste program. So there's a little bit of waste that comes in from bulk collection, compactors, roll-offs, but the bulk of the revenue and the bulk of the expenditures are represented by those first three rows. So that's what we focused a lot of the projections on. So future population of the city and county are important in order to estimate future waste generation, and that's a little bit tricky because this city obviously grows fast, and future population growth is got some inherent uncertainty. So what we looked at is the Florida Bureau of Economic and Business Research publishes low, medium, and high population growth figures. The most conservative figure that we found was the low population growth, because the low population growth scenario grows revenue the slowest, and revenue would grow a little bit slower than expenditures in that program. So being the conservative scenario, that's what we'll discuss in most detail, but we also did calculate the medium and high population growth figures. So based on those initial collection points that we discussed in the beginning, this is what we expect for the future. And then, again, this is for the low population growth scenario. So over the five-year study period, this is where we expect the program to be, and this is what we based the potential revenue expenditures for some different categories. So next, that's collection. This is what we did to look at future revenue and expenditures for the transfer station. So this is the tons received per year historically for the transfer station. As you can see, waste management brings in about 50% of the waste overall. St. Cloud and Kissimmee represent fairly large portions as well, and then there's some smaller haulers that represent a smaller fraction of the overall waste stream to the transfer station. So this is the historic total waste stream for the city and non-city for the transfer station. The blue line is the city, and the orange line is the non-city. And you can see when the line becomes dotted, that's what we're projecting in the future. So just based on the population growth figures that we talked about earlier, this is where we project over the five-year study period, the amount of waste brought to the transfer station will go, and so we'll use that to calculate the necessary tipping fees in the future. So that's kind of what we did to estimate revenue, and this is what we looked at to estimate future expenditures. So there's the collection program. It has both capital and operational expenses. We also have the transfer station with capital and operation expenses. And then we have this third category, which is the administrative and general expenses to the program that's not specific to collection or transfer station. And this is the expenditure. Like I said, collection and transfer station each represent about half the overall expenditures, with the smaller, non-operating expenditures represented by that dark green line. So you can see, operation is the lion's share of the cost, and the capital expenditures are both smaller than operation and highly variable from year to year. So you can see in the 2015, 2016, collection didn't have a lot of capital expenditures, and then the following year, there was a larger amount. So this is part of that discussion about stabilizing the budget from year to year, is finding a way to potentially account for that capital expenditure from year to year without it being different every year. So this is a list of some of the major expenditure subcategories for both collection and transfer station. So salaries and wages, I'm not going to read them all, but you can see some of the obvious ones, capital expenditure, vehicle fuel. These are all important components of operating a solid waste program, so we looked at all these and a few more as well. So this is the breakdown over the last fiscal year 2016, 2017 that we had data for. This is the collection program expenditure. So you can see the largest pipe section right there, about 26%, 28%? Yeah, 26%. That is the waste disposal. So that is the cost to dispose of the waste, which is represented by tipping fees to the transfer station for the collection program. So that's the largest component. The next largest component is salary and wages, and then capital expenditures for this particular year, and then on down to some of the other categories. This is the breakdown that we found. The transfer station has a much larger component devoted to waste disposal. So this is the tipping fee paid to the landfill for the disposal of all the waste for the transfer station. So over half the budget is devoted to tipping fees, and then the other large components, obviously, labor, salary and wages, vehicle maintenance and fuel, and capital expenditures. So that's kind of the historical expenditures. Looking towards the future, we use three different methods to estimate expenditures depending on the category. So for some categories, what we looked at is the historic growth in expenditure. So things like salary and personnel, they don't necessarily stay the same. They grow from year to year. So we looked at the last five years of growth, the average growth rate over the last five years, and we projected that forward. The other thing that we did to project future expenditures for some categories, we looked at the historic average and then added inflation. So we looked at the upper 90% confidence level of things like vehicle fuel, because this is not something that necessarily grows at a steady rate. It can jump around a lot. So we looked at the average and then added inflation to project categories like that. And then finally, one of the, again, the largest component for the transfer station, the largest component for collection, is waste disposal cost, and that scales directly with population. So for that category, we looked only at, we looked at population growth to predict future expenditures for that, as well as adding a factor for inflation. So again, the solid lines represent the historical data that we had as a starting point. The dotted line is the projected future expenditures for the different programs. So the dotted line represents what we project the expenditure will be over the next five years for the collection program and the transfer station program. The other big category is this intergovernmental transfer budget, so we included that as well as a projection. And then finally, capital expenditures. We did not include capital expenditures in the future in the base rate, because currently it's not budgeted from year to year. So we don't have a projection for that in this portion of the report. That's one of the sub-questions we answered when we addressed question three. So it's not, the rate estimate we're going to give as an answer for question two is not going to include future capital expenditures, but we will include the impact of adding a rate increase for future capital expenditures in the later section of the report. So again, this is question two. Now that we have kind of projected what we expect the future expenditures for the program will be, what revenue will be necessary to match those expenditures over the five-year study period? That's what we're going to address in this section in question two. And again, please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. If I'm going too fast, I know there's a lot of technical detail. I don't want anyone to get lost, but I also don't want to belabor things. So this is a summary of the sources of revenue for the program. Just like expenditures, there's two major sources of revenue for the solid waste program. First, there's collection, which represents the fees paid by customers in St. Cloud for solid waste collection, and we have a table of the current rates right now, based on when we started writing this report. And then the other major revenue source is transfer station operation. So the transfer station receives revenue from tipping fees for receiving waste from the city and also from non-city waste, like the Osceola County waste. There's also a couple smaller sources of revenue, the sale of recyclables, sale of capital equipment, and we'll discuss what we did with those sources as well. So historically, again, about 50% of the revenue comes from waste collection. 50% comes from transfer station tipping fees, and then there's some very, very small other sources of revenue for recycling and grants, things like that, sale of capital equipment. But again, the majority comes from those two major cost and revenue centers, the collection program and the transfer station. So again, we projected the historical data into the future, so we looked at, for the collection and the transfer station, both of their revenue sources come directly from the population. So it's the amount of waste received or the amount of residential customers and commercial customers that are in the city. So as the population of those groups grow, that source of revenue will also grow. And again, recycling and other sources of revenue are minor sources of revenue overall, and so we looked at the historical average and then added an inflation factor to account for those. So here's the results. So you can see that, again, the solid lines are historical data, and then when it becomes dotted, that's our projection. So we project that the revenue for the transfer station and the collection program with current rates, so this is not with an updated rate, but the current rate, will result in about $6.5 to $6.7 million for each program by the end of the study period. So once we had where the rates that we currently have are going to lead, then we looked at what we would need to do to change those rates in order to make sure that revenue matches expenditures in the future. So first, what we did is we said, okay, the collection program has its own costs and revenues, and the transfer station program has its own costs and revenues. So what do we need to change in those rates individually to make sure that those programs are covering their own costs? And then, after that, what do we need to do to increase the overall revenue to make sure that the overall program is covering its costs? So the black line in the middle of this figure is revenue neutral, basically. So you can see that the dotted orange line is the collection program, and the dotted green line is the transfer station program. This is the net revenue for the program over the study period based on our projections. So the orange dotted line never crosses that zero line, so that means that the collection program is projected to not require a rate increase in and of itself in order for it to remain revenue neutral over the five-year study period. However, the transfer station is estimated in fiscal year 2021, 2022 to begin losing money if the rate is not increased for that program. So, and down there in the bottom, that blue line represents a cost that's not included in those other two cost centers. That's the intergovernmental transfer. So because of the blue line, both programs will need to increase their rates slightly in order to make sure revenue matches expenditures overall. So you can see that in this figure. We have a new line. We call it the operational total. So together, the operational total will be revenue neutral until 2022, 2023. And so that's the combination of the collection program and the transfer station program. So just for those two programs, they would remain revenue neutral until 2022, 2023. But when you include the intergovernmental transfer, then you get this red line. So that's the program total. So because of the intergovernmental transfer, the inclusion of that expense, then the program itself will actually be projected to need a rate increase by 2019, 2020, so the next fiscal year. So just the transfer station alone will require a rate increase for itself in fiscal year 2021, 2022, but both programs will need a rate increase to cover the growing expense of the intergovernmental transfer to the program total as well. So you can see kind of how these lines shift. The green dotted line is the operational total, so that's, again, the combination of the two big cost centers, their net revenue over this five-year study period, the transfer station and the collection program. With the inclusion of that blue line, it shifts down by the amount of the blue line to become that red line. So that's where the program is projected to be without a rate increase, would be revenue neutral until the following fiscal year. So to summarize the kind of the rate increases that would require, be required to keep all those lines above that zero line, to keep the whole program revenue neutral. Next fiscal year, 2019, 2020, we project it would require a 1% increase in rates, and that's just to cover the expense to the overall program. The following year would require a 1.7% increase for both the collection and transfer station. The year after that would be a 1.9% increase. And again, this is all to cover the expenditures of the intergovernmental transfer, what we've projected that to be. In 2022, 2023, that's when the transfer station would require its own rate increase to keep that program revenue neutral. And then by 2023, 2024, the transfer station needs another revenue increase, but at that point, the overall program would still be revenue neutral. So the collection program wouldn't need a rate increase in that year based on our projections. And again, I wanted to emphasize, this does not include a capital fund or a equipment replacement fund, any money designated for that. So if there are any capital purchases, they would need to come from another source, or they would make the program go below revenue neutral before that point. So based on the rate increases that I talked about in the previous slide, this would be what the updated rates would represent for both the collection program and the tipping fees at the transfer station. So 1% to 2% increase per year for the first four years for the collection and transfer station, and then a greater increase for the transfer station for the last two years of the five-year study period. So if those rate increases were enacted, this would be the revenue and expenses projected for the five-year study period. So it shows that with those rates, the revenue stays just beyond expenses, just based on margin of error, and this is what we project the program would be over the next five years. So that was the first two questions. Where do we expect expenditures to be, and what would be the rates to meet those expenditures? And now we're going to get into some of the more specific questions we know the city was interested in addressing. So the first question would be, what would a necessary rate increase be to cover future capital expenditures? So this is that figure before, but now we've added a dotted line for capital expenditures, what we projected that to be. And again, we did that based on our conservative estimate of the average, the upper confidence limit plus inflation over the five-year study period. Comes out to about $1 million a year, which represents our best conservative estimate of what the program needs every year for capital expenditure. So this would be the change in percentage for the collection program and for the transfer station in order to cover those. So it's basically the increases we discussed earlier, but we have a one-time increase of about 10% for the collection and transfer station program to cover those capital expenditures in one fiscal year. And this would be a little bit different if you moved it around to different years, but this is basically the idea of adding that one time and then continuing with the other regime of rate increases as before. And so this would be the updated rates if those changes were enacted. And again, so it would be a one-time change in 2019, 2020, and then the other years would be the, basically the same rate increase that we discussed earlier. So the next question we wanted to discuss is privatization of...
I'm sorry.
Councilman Askew has a question.
Can you go back one slide?
Absolutely.
Right. First of all, I don't think anybody would throw a 10% fee in there. Is there a way you can refactor that in and say, okay, if we went 3% each year for four years, that would seem, in my head, would cover that amount? So at least it wouldn't be a giant jump, which is really $2, a little less than $2 jump. And, you know, and factoring that in? Or do you have to do 10.3%? And I guess, I understand all this is what we call a wag, or whatever you want to call it. So is there another way? I mean, you're giving us this. Is there another way you can factor in some other fee adjustment other than a 10%?
Sure, yeah.
Whammy under our customers?
Yeah, it could be phased in over five years rather than a one-time increase. So we could certainly include what that fee would be rather than just that one-time increase.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So on this same slide, I was wondering, you know, in the tipping fee, why isn't more burden or more cost put onto non-city waste? I mean, it's our asset. I don't know why the cost is so close, 46.65 or 47.35, like why that's so, you know, if they're outside the city.
We, so we increased historic rates just by the same percentage.
Right, I know, but is that something we could look at to try to?
With your direction, we'd be happy to change that ratio.
And is that the, is that the rate that waste management and the city Kissimmee both pay at the transfer station?
I believe there's slight differences. One got updated one year and one didn't. Kevin, you want to address that?
They pay about $2 less than what those fees are, but I have to go get those contracts for you. But in general numbers, they pay about $2 less than what our gate rates are.
Yeah, so for me, I would like to look at, looking at the people outside the city.
Absolutely.
You know, increasing their rates, not looking at them uniform.
Sure, we would just need whatever ratio you would want to explore in order to do that.
Whatever ratio helps our city residents not experience such a dramatic increase.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. It looks like just the OUC, what they do for their electric, is out of the city is 1.25. It's 25%, 0.25%. So I don't know if you, terminology could do it the same, but I'm sure you couldn't, because it wouldn't equate the same. But for the county and for the city of Kissimmee, they should be upcharged from what we are doing right now. We're the burden. We're picking up the trash. We're bringing it all the way out there for them. All they're doing is just dropping it here. That'd be nice for us to just take it out there to Kissimmee and drop it out there. I think it would be cheaper. We'd save money, and we wouldn't have any inflation, or the costs wouldn't go up. Not what they haven't done in the last few years, but I think it's time that the county and the state, or the city Kissimmee needs to step up the plate, not the city of St. Cloud. I'd like to hold it where it's at.
Councilmember Askew.
Thank you.
Help me. Do all, we have great partners with the county and Kissimmee, and is there a way that they have a specific rate because they're a government agency? And then some of these developers that bring all their stuff, do they get the same rate as the Kissimmee does in Osceola County?
I think they have a negotiated rate.
Sorry. The city of Kissimmee and Osceola County both have contracts with us, so they negotiate contracts. That's why they have the lesser gate rate, but contracts and stuff like that, they pay our tipping fee when they come through.
Okay.
And that, again, that represents a relatively small portion of the waste. The city and non-city waste, the Osceola County waste represents the bulk of the non-city waste, so.
Councilmember Matheny.
Sorry, Kevin. I would have caught you before you sat down. Do you happen to know, like, the duration of those contracts?
I'm actually going to send the contracts out tomorrow morning. That is my fault that they were not out already, but I'm sending them to Mr. Surgeon, so I'm assuming that he will send them to all y'all. I'm doing it first thing in the morning.
Do you know how much time is left in the contracts?
I do not know right offhand, but I said, I will get you that information in the morning.
Right, right. So I understand we have contracts and they are what they are, but, I mean, I think this kind of goes into our pretty girl at the dance analogy. Like, we have, we hold all the cards here. It's our transfer station. I think we need to be smart when we renegotiate these contracts.
Councilmember Trace.
And when we look at it, I just want to make sure that we take into account other transfer stations and other places that they can bring the solid waste, because based on what I can find, Orange County's is $34.80 per ton, so $10 less per ton.
Yeah, but how much is it to ship it?
Exactly. So we just have to look into what trucking costs are, because they do have to truck it to our transfer station from wherever else, so.
Good ideas. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no problem. That was perfect. It's a lot easier to address it as we go than to try to go back at the end, so I'm happy to do that. Any other questions come up?
I'm just not real happy about wanting to make a decision here quickly. I understand it's a workshop, but still, I'd like to get all the dots high and cross the Ts before we jump to do anything. So if it takes another month or two or three, let's get all the Is and Ts crossed and dotted. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Great. So next, we wanted to discuss the impacts of privatizing the waste collection and transfer station operation. So we know the city was interested in exploring that. So one of the things that we looked at is we looked at several similar-sized communities that have private collection programs and compare them to the current costs for St. Cloud for collection. So we found a few things here. Overall, first of all, St. Cloud is below the average that we found. And all of these have slight differences, but many of them are, again, similar level of service, similar number of collections to St. Cloud. So overall, it was lower. One important note is if you compare St. Cloud to Osceola County, St. Cloud is actually lower than the surrounding county's waste hauling rate by a good margin. So one of the things we found, if you look at some of the lower fees, North Lauderdale, Sarasota, Benita Springs, they're connected to a larger collection network, so they're either piggybacked on a county contract or a neighboring large municipality. So what we found is not only is St. Cloud lower than the average rate for private haulers, but it's actually lower than the potential contract they would piggyback on, which would be the Osceola County project. So overall, what we found is that private haulers don't seem to represent a cost savings. Obviously, the city could explore an RFP and get more exact numbers, but based on the surrounding community, based on similar-sized communities, it's not, we can't say that there's any reason to believe that there'd be a cost savings with privatization compared to how the city's currently performing.
Councilmember Matheny.
The Osceola County costs, is that the current cost that they just put into a? The Osceola County costs, is that the current cost that they just put into effect?
I believe we have a contract...
This new contract is going to affect them.
But that's what's reflected in this graphic?
Correct. And it's important to note, too, that that contract includes an inflation adjustment, a CPI adjustment, so every year it will continue to increase, just like the St. Cloud program would. And so, yeah, this is the, this is the more detailed comparison. I looked at what the future expected cost would be, so this is based on our estimate for St. Cloud in orange, what we expect the charge per residence per month would be compared to CPI adjustment for the surrounding Osceola County, and we found that it still appeared that St. Cloud is saving the residents more than the private contract for the surrounding community.
Ms. Matheny.
Sorry, another question. Is that orange graphic what we have currently or what you're proposing?
On the left is what you have currently.
It's currently?
Yes. On the right is where we would expect to be at the end of the five-year study period, so after five years of inflation and rate adjustment.
Which recommendation is that? Is that your 10% plus?
This does not include the capital expenditures, so that's, but it does include the, all the rate adjustments for the more conservative low population growth scenario. So moving on to the next question that we wanted to look at, there was a discussion the city wanted to explore about updating the solid waste fleet or potentially leasing compared to purchasing vehicles. So we looked at what potential rating impacts for that would be. So again, fleet maintenance represents a significant expense. It's also a really variable expense for the collection program. There's probably some harder to quantify expenses, like, you know, downtime and personnel costs while people wait for a truck to be fixed. So one thing that we, one challenge we encountered is that we could not find a lot of cost data without a formal RFP process. People were very guarded about the cost data for leasing and purchasing without actually talking to someone interested in signing on the dotted line. So, and another issue that we encountered, we did not have a good historical data, just the data breakdown, the expenditure breakdown that we had wasn't detailed enough for us to say things like, what's the maintenance expense per vehicle per year? And do older vehicles cost more than newer vehicles? We didn't have the data in the, in the things that were tracked to make those conclusions. We didn't have things like specific downtime per vehicle. And we also didn't have the maintenance expense for decommissioned vehicles that are no longer in operation. So that made it a little bit challenging to make this comparison. So we kind of had to look at industry standards, optimal replacement cycles. So this figure here, you can see the optimal replacement cycle for a solid waste vehicle. Typically, solid waste vehicles last five to seven years before the hydraulics and the complicated mechanics of these pretty detailed and complicated pieces of equipment start to fail. So typically, what you do is you look at the point where the maintenance costs start to intersect the cost of just replacing the vehicle. And again, that typically for the industry is about five to seven years. So to get a better estimate for the city, we would need more detailed cost data specific to the city, but this is typically what the industry does. So we did look at the data we had from the city. This is the distribution of vehicles by their ages. So again, there are 30 vehicles in the fleet. Again, the typical life cycle's five to seven years. About half the fleet is seven years old or older. There's a lot that are kind of way out there in the tail, 12, 13, 15, 20 years old. So that is, again, not typical for, for cost savings for a solid waste program. So just as an example, we looked at what the cost would be to replace these, the current fleet with newer vehicles. So when we talked about the capital expenditure fund of being about a million dollars a year, that is somewhat close to the seven-year replacement interval. And again, the vehicle replacement is a big component of capital expenditures historically for the city solid waste program. So you can see what the annual cost would be to switch to different replacement cycles. And the last line there is what would be the cost over the next five years to gradually replace all the vehicles that are older than 10 years, just as an example. And then on the right column, you can see what the increase in collection fees would be to cover these different scenarios.
Councilmember Askew.
So this whole leasing thing, do other agencies, other municipalities, government, do they do that?
Sure, it's common for other municipalities to lease vehicles.
So we can't just call up a municipality and say, can you, can you send me a record search and send me your lease?
We did look at publicly available information. We did call a couple of people. They weren't able to get back to us with data.
We can get it.
I was going to say, that's, by law, I believe it's public record, you'd have to be able to get it.
Sure. We made some requests. We didn't get it back in time to include in the report.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we could explore that more.
I think, well, I was thinking, whole legally, how many times you drilled it into our head, if somebody asked for something, you better give it to them.
We try to be above board here in St.
Right, right. So yes, there is other agencies that do it. Yes, we can get that record.
It's out there.
We can get that.
Maybe we can request it for them to try to help.
Yeah, that is one obstacle we ran into, is they kind of didn't want to talk to us as much because we were kind of a private entity. I know that they do have to, but we ran into some resistance and a few people that we talked to.
We can just sick Dan on them and they'll take care of it.
Point me in the direction.
Okay. So the next question that we discussed, looking at, is creating an impact fee to cover the costs incurred for adding new customers as the city grows. So there's a lot of expenditures to adding a new customer to the solid waste collection program. Residential customers need bins, they need three bins, they need a trash bin, a recycling bin, a yard waste bin. Commercial customers, they need to be supplied a dumpster. Every about 1,500 residents require an additional collection vehicle, and then, you know, every 208 dumpsters or so require a new front loader. So this doesn't even include the administrative cost of dealing with all this new equipment and dealing with all this growth, but there's a significant upfront cost to adding a customer to the program. So we looked at those costs. In total, adding a residential customer is about $367, adding a commercial customer about 312, adding a commercial dumpster customer is about $2,240. So if these were, if these totals were to be represented by an impact fee, then that would cover the cost upfront to the program rather than reduce, being required to be paid back over the course of several years. So, you know, at $17 a month per customer, it takes a while to recoup the cost of $367 upfront. So this would be one way that the city could explore, recouping some of those expenditures on the front end to help cope with development early on. So looking at the total revenue that this impact fee would bring in, under the low-growth scenario, and so this is one example where the low-growth and the high-growth scenario differ pretty significantly. Under the low-growth scenario, this represents about $600,000 a year. Under the high-growth scenario, it represents about $1.4 million a year that the program will be having to spend in the fiscal year 2023, 2024, based on those growth projections. So finally, we looked at the impact of unincorporated Osceola County, if the waste from that county was diverted to a different transfer station.
Did you, wait, Councilmember Trace would like to ask a question.
Dan, is there anything that state did to preempt us from enacting a solid waste impact fee? It's like, this is possible and we just haven't done it yet?
That's correct.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. This is something that I brought up to Bill when we were talking about a new subdivision that was coming online, and in my agenda review, staff had told me that they were going to have to go buy a new trash truck to serve these alleys. That's what I was told in the agenda review. It turned out different when we talked about it in the, here, but that's when I said, why aren't we doing a trash impact fee? And I think Councilmember Trace, when we discussed it before, looked it up and found surrounding communities that did it, but, you know, I like this idea. And I guess what would happen if you already had an account in the city? Like, I lived in home X, and then I sold it and moved to another home. I should, are you, because you're an existing account holder, I would think it should port with you?
When you get a CO, just like any other impact.
So it goes with the house, it's not the account so much, so it's just into the house? Okay.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And is this, do we need to do another study to set the fee, or is this sufficient with this background?
I think, well, I don't know, we'd have to look, I think we'd probably need another study that's specifically designed and go through the impact fee analysis and report that you typically do with impact fees. We certainly can look into it. This could be the basis. This report, this report wasn't put together for the purposes of generating an impact fee. Typically, impact fee studies are done for that sole purpose, so that you can do the legislative requirements to properly establish it.
But this would be the developer paying its own way.
Yep, so the impact fees are all about.
So I think you got three people coming. I know it's a workshop, can we move forward?
Mayor?
We're working on an RFP for all impact fees. I'll make sure this is in there. I'm pretty sure it is, but I'll just double check, make sure it's in that study.
Perfect.
So we can do it all in one swipe. I'll keep coming back.
Thank you.
Break it up. Just kidding.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem.
Good, Jim.
All right, and then the last question, I already discussed, the impact of if the large percentage of the waste from Osceola County was diverted from the transfer station. So this would obviously have a huge impact on the revenue to the transfer station. So kind of the immediate impact would be the tipping fee would be about 15% short of where it would need to be to cover expenditures. And that would be if it happened fiscal year 2019, 2020. So a 15% increase would offset those expenditures, but it's important to note, the expenditures also would drop. So again, the largest portion of expenditures for the tipping, the transfer station is tipping fees to the landfill, and that would go down by the same percentage. So the program expenditures would have to be adjusted. The program would probably have to be rethought a little bit, but this would be kind of the best-case scenario is an immediate 15% shortfall in tipping fees. So just to review the questions one more time and kind of the conclusion that we came to, the first question is, what would be the expected future expenditures for fiscal year 2019, 2020 through 2023, 2024, the five-year study period? So overall, the total program expenditures are projected to increase about 4.6% per year under the more conservative low population growth scenario. And then the rates necessary for revenue to match expenditures for those expenses, about a 1 to 1.9% increase for the collection program for the first three years, and then a one, or for, over the five-year study period, and then a 1 to 4.8% adjustment for the transfer station over that five-year study period would bring revenue and expenditures projections about in the line. And then for the more specific questions about changes to the program, a 9.3% increase in 2019, 2020 would cover what we project as the average $1 million capital expenditures per year. We found for privatizing the waste collection and transfer station operation, overall, the city is below average for similar communities for private haulers, and it's below average, below what the surrounding county pays, so that indicates we don't expect a cost saving for privatization. Updating the collection fleet, again, we couldn't find good data on leasing within the time that we had, but to bring the fleet update to only be less than 10 years old would be about a 6% rate increase. Transitioning the fleet to a seven- and five-year replacement cycle would cost between about $900,000 and $1.25 million, which would be an 8 to 11% rate increase. And again, without a formal RFP, we weren't able to find leasing costs from vendors, but the city could explore an RFP or, again, explore the data from other communities. So creating an impact fee, this would generate revenue and cover the cost of about 312, 367, and $2,240 for the different residential, commercial, and commercial dumpster customers. And this could represent up to a $1.3 million saving per year for the 2023, 2024, for the end of the study period. Finally, if Osceola County would divert its waste to a different transfer station, this would represent about a 50% decrease in revenue, and this would probably result in about a 15% shortfall in the tipping fee rate currently. So that's, that's the results we found. I'm happy to answer any other questions or any other follow-up that you guys need.
Do we have any other questions from council?
How do you, Mayor?
Councilmember Trace.
I've heard of some other cities and counties having a franchise fee for CND roll-off containers. Is that something we can look into as well? Of just one company that we work with for, for large roll-off containers for construction debris, and, you know, that's another revenue stream for the city, but then also we can control which vendors come into the city. So I just didn't know if that, if you had any backup on that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the data based on what we've been provided for this report to say what that would represent in terms of revenue, but certainly a lot of communities do that, and that and other strategies for different flow control in the area for CND, that would potentially represent more income. I know that a lot of CND currently does come through the transfer station. I don't know the exact amount, but that is something that they receive, so it could increase the fraction of that, which would represent more revenue potentially.
I guess, Kevin, would you know the answer to that of, do a lot of the...
Well, they, they do. A lot of, a lot of cities do allow franchise agreements and collect a franchise fee, but in St. Cloud, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, historically, St. Cloud has been in that, has been exclusively in that business and generated revenue by providing those containers on its own. So if you are going to enter into franchise agreements and allow, you might, so that was what, that's been basically the thing. Now, whether other folks are doing it or not is another issue.
Oh, they are.
In Kissimmee, ways you have to use a certain vendor for your construction debris.
It's like American or something.
Yeah, it's someone. But like, I've driven around communities and I've seen four or five different, you know, Rawls and Bobini, some other companies out there that have their roll-off containers for, for construction.
Right. I know ordinance requires people for dumpsters to be able to be with St. Cloud, but I'm not sure about roll-offs. That'd be something I have to go, go and look at to be able to see, because I do know we do have roll-off trucks, but I do not know if we are, if our code allows other people to come in. That's something I would have to do some research on.
Certainly, that's not the case. You certainly can.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't suggesting us to get into the roll-off container business just a matter of controlling what comes in and out. And then do a lot of those in the area come to our transfer station and get dumped, or do they go somewhere else?
We have a whole, a whole area just to set up for roll-offs to be able to come in and be able to dump out. We have a whole CND area that they come to. So we do have quite a bit of business that comes.
Okay. I just wanted to summarize kind of some of my thoughts. I'm not interested in us privatizing our solid waste operation. I think we control our own destiny, and, you know, I like the fact that the, the data backs that up. I'd like for us to look into a solid waste impact fee. We definitely need to do a better job of getting some of our maintenance in line and capital expenditures on some of this equipment to make sure that we have adequate equipment. I'd like to see us kind of start budgeting to get us into that five-year realm for the replacement schedule, and then if, if things happen in the market or whatever, we can, we can adjust and then go back down to the seven instead of starting at seven or 10, and then we spend no money, you know, for a couple of years. And then, city manager, Surgeon, do we, is the fleet management software that we're implementing, is that what's going to get us that information?
That's correct. Last, councilman, you guys approved that purchase, and that will help us get that data that we can put our arms around.
And it will track per vehicle, everything that maintains?
Very detailed.
And then, if we could look at the city versus non-city tipping rates? That's kind of everything I kind of saw.
You've got a lot to do there.
Councilmember Askew.
I'll add, and I'm with Keith, Trace, on the, taking a look at Kissimmee's way that they do trash. You can only use one roll-off there, and they're partnering with them.
Well, I certainly think whatever fees that we change, you have to include your capital and your equipment costs in that. You just can't, and I think we, you can't go to a 10-year equipment replacement plan. I don't even think seven years is, is smart. It just creates a bad morale with staff when you're constantly having to deal with breakdowns and maintenance. Their, their morale is better, their work gets done better. So I think that certainly needs to be included into whatever changes we make. And I certainly think we need to take a close look at what we're charging our non-residents. You know, we shouldn't have to carry a burden there, that'll all be a profit center.
Here, here.
Any, any other input, Matheny?
I agree with all three of you.
Great, great report.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We think both of you did an excellent job. Thank you, Jim, for your presentation. It was excellent.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Well, last thing I'll mention is that the city of St. Cloud staff does a great job. They have very low complaint rate. I think they're providing a great service for the city. So, I mean, obviously, the data bore out, the privatization wasn't, wasn't recommended for this, but your staff does a great job and serves the city well, so you guys should know that. I'm sure you do, so.
Great.
Thank you very much, and we are proud of our staff. At this time, we will have a discussion regarding our lobbyists and our future lobbyist efforts. I think our lobbyists are here, allowing each of them to present a report of their work and update. of their work and update. Mr. Barrett?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be here this evening. I'll give you a quick update on where we stand at the present time. There are still a number of bills that the governor has not taken action on yet, that are still waiting on his desk for either signature or veto. But we'll go through what, what did pass. First of all, there were 1,675 general bills that were filed and 174 that passed. So it was just a little over 10% of the bills that were filed passed. On the local bill side, there were 54 local bills filed, only 20 of which passed, about 36% of the local bills passed. The, our local bill passed both the House and the Senate, and as, as you all know, was signed into law by the governor recently, and it is now in effect. We were, the local bill process is somewhat different than the general, is very different than the general bill process, has its own sets of rules that we had to go through. We, we got the entire delegation to sign off, including Representative Cortez to sign proper paperwork on the, on agreeing to our amendments at the, at the committees up there. So we were able to get the delegation behind that, and we did amend the bill to where it is, 1,500 square feet and 65 seats. The, the, of course, it has to be 51% still in food. That didn't change. But, so, so that's all been done. It has now been signed into law, and it is active in law. The downtown revitalization project, we had $300,000 that ended up in the final budget for that. The budget is one of the, one of the bills that is still sitting on the governor's desk awaiting his action. We're expecting it any day now to final action on the budget. So I'll let Chris talk a little bit more about that in, in just a moment when he gets up here. But it is in the budget, and we're waiting on that to come down. I want to go through a few of the bills real quickly. It was an impact fee bill that we had worked on for about two years. It, it's also awaiting action by the governor. It codified the rational nexus test, and it mandates the earliest that impact fees can be collected is at the issuance of the building permit. And not this, this session, but the session before, I worked with Dan Manzares, Mr. Manzares, on, on language that exempted water sewer connection fees from this, so that it was made clear in statute that, that there was no question we could continue to use those fees to offset system expansion. And the city currently collects impact fees at CO, so that, that didn't impact your abilities to continue business as you've done yourself. We were able to keep that language in there this year as well. The, the industry agreed to it. Representatives and senators agreed to it, so that it stayed in there. The CRA bill passed the House. It's in the Senate. It's awaiting action by the governor as well. It does have a mandatory sunset of September 30th, 2039. However, the bill provides that the local government that created the CRA can prevent the sunset of the CRA by a simple majority vote. It has a number of other things in it. Ethics training for the CRA board members, has to use a procurement process that the city or county that created it. By January 1st, it requires digital maps to be published on your website of the boundaries of the CRA. And beginning in March of 2020, it requires each CRA to file with the city or county that created it, wrote most recent audit, performance data, et cetera. So as far as the city CRA goes, if, if you wish it not to sunset, it would just need a simple majority vote. I know there were a lot of changes in that through it. It started out as a supermajority. There was talk about referendums and such, but, but I want to make, make you all aware that it is just a simple majority vote at this point to, to continue your CRA. There was property development bill that dealt with inclusionary housing practices. Basically, it says that the local government, you can continue to offer incentives, but you cannot force it. So you may be able to give incentives to offset the cost, you know, density bonuses, or, or reduced fees in that negotiation with them. The, there was a human trafficking bill that, that passed that, as far as it provides to the city, it requires that each law enforcement officer to complete a human trafficking training within one year of employment or by July 1st, 2022. And if they, if they don't have that mandatory training, then their, their statewide certification for law enforcement would be revoked. Vegetable gardens was another one that passed as well. Waiting action on the governor preempts the, the ability to provide local ordinances outlawing vegetable gardens and, and yards. It does allow you to regulate water usage, fertilizer usage, and, and invasive species for control, but, but it doesn't allow you to outlaw gardens as, as a whole. The, another bill with private property rights that dealt with, also put restrictions on tree ordinances. Bill provides that as long as a homeowner has an arborist that certifies the tree needs to come down, that there can be no license or permitting fees required by the local government under those circumstances. And they, they can't be required residential to replant a tree that they've taken down. The, Representative Sabatini out of bills also awaiting action by the governor. It would mandate the award of attorney's fees and costs prevailing parties in any action where the enforcement of a local ordinance is either preempted by the state law or by the state constitution. It did allow for, it does allow for a 30-day period for either the local government to change the law, or notice that they're, that they are changing it, and then provide another 30 days to change it. There were, let's see, firefighters, cancer benefits is another one. It provided a, a number of benefits to them, $25,000 payout. Requires the employer to reduce, to reimburse the firefighter for out-of-pocket deductibles, copays, coinsurance. In order to qualify for it, they have to have been employed for five continuous years and not have used tobacco products in that, in that preceding five years as well. There were a number of other bills that were of a concern that did not pass. Vacation rentals that would have, you know, we'd been dealing with that issue for several years. That bill did not pass. Another one that was preemption of local regulations that the city was concerned about, that bill did not pass either. Local business tax that would have, that would have capped it at $25 per year, that did not pass either. The retainage bill that would have, that would have reduced by half from 10% to 5% the amount of retainage you could hold within a, from a general contractor, that bill did not pass. The public records bill that was, was of a concern that would have stopped the city from going to, to court to, to seek clarification, that bill did not pass either. And then there was an environmental regulation bill that was vetoed by the governor as well, that dealt with quite a number of, from single-use past straws all the way down. It was, it was an omnibus bill, but it did, it was vetoed by the governor. So as a, sort of a quick overview of where we were at and, and what we'd accomplished as far as your legislative agenda, you had the local bill, you had the downtown revitalization, both of which we accomplished. You also had the Lake Cypress project where we would support Toho, but Toho did not make a request of that this year. And so that's, that's pretty much where we're at. I, I know that, I want to let Chris speak as well. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions from council? If you had to cite what your greatest accomplishment was as our, one of our lobbyists, what would you say was your, you feel like your greatest accomplishment serving us?
The local bill, for sure. That was, you know, when, when I was tasked with that, I drafted the language of the local bill. I drafted the public notice and provided it to Linda and Dan. With a lot of foresight in thinking about how to do that public notice, I left it open enough to where you could amend it, because had I, had I, had I tied that down tighter and not left it open, you would not have been able to amend it. It would have been a substantial change to it. It would have kicked it out, and you would have been one of that 60% that did not pass. When local bills are amended, a lot of times, it kills them in the process for various reasons. So to get the entire delegation to sign off on it, to get the, the delegation chair on it, and as a matter of fact, Representative Cortez ended up co-sponsoring the bill, to get that, through that process and, and, and make it actually come to fruition to where now it's actually going to be passed, and people can start applying, and the economic benefits that it'll give the city, from what I can see over the long term, that would be a great economic benefit to the city. So when, when you ask the question, the word that was put in on the local bill would be what I would say.
Thank you. What is the most important step you feel like we need to take in order to improve our relationship with you and with any lobbyists that serve our city?
That's a good question, Mayor. And I'll, you know, if it's okay with you, I'll refer back to, I believe it was the first meeting you and I had ever had together. We sort of discussed this issue a little bit, and what I told you at that time was, is as far as things that'll come up, like for instance, the impact fee bill, I can play defense on that. When I see that coming up, I know that it'll impact the city. So I pick up the phone, I call Mr. Manzares. I call Mr. Sturgeon. I say, Mr. Manzares, you know, let's work through some language on this. How can we amend this? So when I see those types of things come up, that, that's, that's instinctual to me, because I've, I've been with the city for so long. Business tax is another one. I know, I know where you're at on that. So, so playing defense on those is, 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 is a given. What, what I would say is a clear agenda from the council on, on what direction they want to go, what they want us to work on, which I, I, I believe that you did this year, absolutely. I mean, and that was one of the things I discussed with you early on, that, that, you know, if, if you all don't bring it to us, we can't make it up ourselves and go do it. But, but we work on whatever you bring to us. So this year, when, when you actually, you know, the local bill that was brought forward, that the funding that was brought forward, what I would say is is more of, of an input from, from you all as the council of, of things that you would be looking for. Even if it's, even if it's something that may take us two or three years to accomplish, that we can put on a midterm schedule. More information from you all of, of what types of projects, what types of bills, what types of changes in the law that, that you would see would be important to you all. That information coming to us then allows us to, to be proactive. You know, myself and Chris and Dean, we can, we can be proactive, and we can go out, and we can figure out how to make that happen. And as I said, even though only 11% of general bills pass, it may take us a couple of years in order to get it there, a standard within this. But if we know, then we can work on it. So, so what I would say is, is, is just, you know, as, as much information as you can give us on what your priorities are and on what you would like for us to work on.
Are there any other questions? So I, I think, I think this council has probably tried the last year to give more clarity to you as a, to find out in Tallahassee what we can get. We tried to dot the i and cross the t's. And I think that was what I tried, and I think the rest of the council members did the same thing.
Yes.
We were very clarity, and we wanted upfront and show, tell us, tell us where we're at. And I think anytime that I made a phone call to you and asked you a question, if you didn't know right then and there, you got it back to me on the next day.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. And I, I think that's what we want to do, is clarity back and forth. We want you to press for something, and I mean, go for it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Gray Robinson, Chris, I think you're here if you didn't introduce yourself. Think about Nuj.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Manager, City Attorney. Chris Carver, you with Gray Robinson. I'm based out of Orlando office. Dean Cannon and I, and Dean sends his regrets. He wasn't able to make it down tonight, but we appreciate the opportunity to represent you, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'll echo a few things what Bill said, and then obviously give a couple other points to highlight from this session. Excited about the $300,000 for the downtown revitalization. We continue to work with the governor's office to, to, to the best of our ability, make sure that whenever he signs that budget and, and applies some vetoes, that ours is not one of them. He has signaled through a couple different sources. He, he says the budget will be less than 91 million, billion, excuse me, when he's done with it, which it's right now 91.1. So at a minimum, he will veto $100 million worth of projects, which in the scheme of things, isn't that difficult to do. But there are lots of projects, ours included, that, that's just real easy to put a line through. So we're doing our best effort to make sure ours isn't one of those. And then as well, the, the local bill. Bill obviously was, was, was lead on that, but we were proud to, to work alongside him and help get that across the finish line. To his point, they don't all make it to the finish line for a variety of reasons, and even when they make it to the finish line, they don't always get signed by the governor, including Governor vetoed one from this particular cycle. So they're not always, as much as they feel innocuous, right, when they go through, they're never, ever that innocuous. But I'll say, when Dean and I and a few others were in DC the last couple of days, visiting with our DC office, talking about some of the things that we do with them, and, and the DC guys asked us, well, what was the theme of this session? You know, we worry about federal politics, you worry about state. There's always a theme for each legislative session. Last year, unfortunately, the theme will always be known as Parkland, and, and that will always be last year. This year, no surprise, Hurricane Michael recovery was a theme that, that followed this year. Water policy was a theme, which is a little new for this legislature. They've always cared about water issues, but with a governor who put a $2 billion ask over the next four years on water quality, mainly focused in the Everglades but other parts of the state, that became a focus. Immigration and healthcare, those issues have been playing for years, but that, both of those came across the finish line and signed by the governor. And then, of course, the, the one thing they actually have to do, the budget. And so, and we'll talk about the budget, but before I get into that, it's also important to note, we have a great delegation, Representative LaRosa and Senator Torres. LaRosa is in leadership this past session, and, and the next year before he terms out. It's something that has benefited the city well. And Senator Torres, even though he's in the minority party in the Senate, he's, he's found his footing, and he's, he's doing a real good job up there. And I think as he goes on through the sessions, even if in the minority party, he's going to continue to be effective, so, and a good advocate for the city. So we're proud to work with them. And then, of course, I, I say it often when, when I speak before groups, is presence is power. And I want to thank those of you and others who participated and made an active trip to Tallahassee. Your presence in the, in the process was important. And Mayor, you'd asked Bill, what, what is the, the greatest accomplishment, or what to build on? There's a lot of things to brag on this session, and we're proud. But I think more than anything, at least from my perspective, is your profile has been raised. And I appreciate you all coming to Tallahassee and working with us, the, the staff that we work with, and they're, they're going to be there long after the members term out. They, they met with you, they got to get to know you. We got to know many of the rising leadership, and I think that's going to pay a lot of dividends, not just next session, but in the next cycle and the cycle beyond that. And I appreciate the confidence you placed in our team to put you up there, put you in those places to succeed. We'll make the same ass next session. Come on up. We'll, we'll make it effective. But we do appreciate that. So quickly on the budget, it was 91.1 billion. Hurricane Michael played a major part of that budget, both in affordable housing issues and some tax credit issues, and just general allocations to the area, creative things like waiving in-state tuition, or allowing in-state tuition for out-of-state students in those colleges and universities. Because of housing being an issue, a lot of folks can't even return to live there and go to class. So they're trying to make sure the university's stateful, so they don't go by the wayside. So big focus there, water. Over $450 million dedicated towards water, water quality improvement, so they're right on pace with the governor's $2 billion ask. 150 of that was towards directly water quality, $25 million to SEPTIC, and I want to talk a little about that later, SEPTIC conversion. 49 was in water projects, just generally speaking, and then some other funding directly targeted at the Everglades. Transportation, that budget was fully funded again at 10-plus billion dollars, which will only inure to our benefit here in central Florida and St. Cloud with all the road projects. Affordable housing, there was a big push to not sweep the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Unfortunately, there, there was still quite a bit of sweeping going on there. A lot of it was swept towards the Panhandle for obvious reasons and recovery. So while it's a sweep, and it's frustrating to other parts of the state, it's hard to really argue against it, and I do not expect the governor to veto that. They're certainly hurting more than other parts of the state. There was some, about $100 million that was generally kept in the fund for the rest of the state. It ultimately won't go very far, but it's better than it was in previous years. And interestingly enough, Jacksonville had an $8 million appropriation out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund specifically for a project in the northwest end where they have a lot of issues. And I, I point that out, is if it survives the veto pen, perhaps this community and other parts of central Florida can think of a collaborative effort to go after a larger portion that can serve some of the needs that we're having here in central Florida. can serve some of the needs that we're having here in central Florida. Osceola County and St. Cloud, no stranger to that. I know Visit Florida is important to this region, the city. Obviously tourism's the lifeblood of the three-county area that we're in. They got 50 million, which is a cut, if you will, but they got to survive, so it's sort of a, it's a half win. And if you weren't following that story, Speaker Oliva kind of injected a new issue into this process. They were scheduled to sunset in October of this year, based on the statute. Speaker Oliva made it clear that he had no interest in moving any legislation that was going to take away that sunset. The Governor ultimately weighed in and asked the Speaker to give him a year to evaluate the program. So through the implementing bill, which is only good for a year, they renewed it. So if nothing changes in the next section, Visit Florida will expire June 30th, 2019. Obviously, us and others are going to be working on the tourism industry's behalf to keep it alive and keep it functioning. But it will be a fight. It will not be easy. I mentioned transportation. Another bill to note, and I won't get much in the policy, Bill did a good job covering them, is transportation corridors. You probably followed that legislation. It was a major priority of Senate President Galvano. It was in those memos that I sent you probably at midnight every Sunday. Sorry for those late emails, but that's about what time I could get to it after getting to know my children again, after being gone each week in session. I finally would write those Sunday night. It's for three major corridors across the state. One is the Suncoast Parkway, which is essentially, think Pinellas, Pasco County, north up to Georgia. And then there's a connection from Williston area, where the turnpike is ending now, to connect into that Suncoast Parkway. And then one that probably has the most effect on us is one that would go from Polk all the way down to Naples, Fort Myers area. It's a lot of years, they've called it the Heartland Expressway, but they called it just Polk to Collier in the bill. That one, obviously, starting in Polk, which would directly connect, which is adjacent to both us and Lake County with two major corridors in there, will probably have the most long-term effect on our region. Will make this area much more attractive as housing area, obviously, if you can connect in on roads. And also for business, if you can come from that area into here. So pay attention to that. There's funding in there for adjacent corridors, which we technically would be an adjacent corridor to the Polk one. So certainly, we should pay attention to it. The goal is to do design the next three years. And then beyond that, starting around 2021, they would begin the construction with the goal of finishing it in 2030. And those would all be toll roads, which is of note to help it sustain going forward. So I tell you all that, just because it will have long-term an effect on our area here, and it's something we should pay attention to and try to actively participate with FDOT. And the last thing, Enterprise Florida was fully funded again. Again, they lost all their incentives years ago under previous cycles, but the fully funding is an important part because we know they're driving businesses and trying to enhance the businesses we already have, especially here in central Florida and even St. Cloud area, is important. And with that, you probably already know and you pay attention to this project, the bridge project received quite a bit of funding through the legislative process. Again, nothing has gone through the vetoes yet, and we're paying attention to that. Again, they're high-dollar tickets, so we worry a little bit on vetoes because it's easy, if you're trying to count to 100, it's easy to go after the bigger items. But we, just like our downtown revitalization, have been working to educate the Governor's staff on the importance of those. With that, I think the ultimate thing globally is, this was a peaceful session. If you've been following, the last couple of sessions have had a lot of friction built into it, and friction either between the Governor's Office and the legislature, between the House and the Senate, or what have you. You had a Speaker and a President that didn't get along on everything. President couldn't get his gambling bill done. There was a lot of friction on higher education, especially as you paid attention to UCF issues. But they actually made an effort, not many people know this, over the summer before they were elected in, they had, I want to say, according to folks I trust in the process, at least six times where they made a conscious effort, them and the families, to get together, have dinners, get together and get to know each other, so that when they fast-forward to session, this last one and the next one, when they have those friction points, they can work it out a little more peacefully, and maybe less in the public eye where there's all these issues and people freak out about special session. And of course, the Governor is enjoying a honeymoon period. He's done a good job as a former legislator himself on the congressional side. He's trying to work with the folks in the legislative process, and so far, it seems to work. There's still some bills outstanding, and of course, once he vetoes one person's project, that's going to not go over well with that particular member. So he'll upset some people, but I would say he's doing a good job of trying to work with them and keep this amicable. So a lot of opportunities in the next session, and I don't want to jump into questions on that, but I will say, going into next session, I would encourage us to look for opportunities in water. And I'll admit, I don't fully understand all of your water needs and issues, whether it's septic or other issues, but the Governor has put a flag down saying he wants more water funding. So that's a good indication that you're not going to get vetoed. I would say, out of the entire budget, water's probably the safest bet on projects. And then as well, I always say, and I think Bill would agree, make us tell you no. Call us at any time, pick our brains anytime, have as many of these workshops as you want. I promise you, someone from our team will make sure they're available to talk with you and go through these issues. We want to, I want to get to a point, and I know we want to get to a point where it is hand in glove, and I think we're close to that, but I don't want to pretend I can read all of your minds and know exactly the issues that you care about. But we want to get to that point where we are, the minute we hear of one OPAGA study or this or that, we're picking up the phone and either calling Bill or someone else saying, did you know this? Let's start looking into this and let's figure out if there's an opportunity for us. So with that, I'll answer any questions you'd like or move on for more important business.
Well, thank you for your answer to a couple of my questions, but you talked about improving our relationship. One of the, to me, one of the challenges that we have with knowing what's going on in Tallahassee and what's available, you know, we don't know. I mean, there's so many things that we could certainly tap into, or possibly tap into if we knew what they were. And so are you suggesting that maybe workshops would, ahead of time, would enable us to be able to figure those kind of things out? Because there's just a plethora of things and monies that are spent that we'd love to tap into, but...
Absolutely. Well, two things.
Water's a big one.
In that DC meeting I was referencing, Dean and I, we were talking about this meeting today and kind of going over what we want to make sure we covered for you all's behalf. One thing we spoke about is, you saw those weekly memos we put out Sunday usually, there's still a lot that goes on when session's not in session, both from a political perspective, things that are going on with agencies, they're finally starting to spend the money they were allocated. Oh, by the way, they're already starting to work on their budgets for next year and make requests. And so we're trying to formulate a way to better brief you in memos that are digestible, not just a whole lot of words that you have to go, well, do I really have an hour to digest this? But give you something that you can quickly process and then go, okay, make some split decisions on that. But yes, session starts early. It's up there on the slide. It's January 2020. They're going to have committee weeks as early as September. Bills will start getting filed late July, early August. And so we'll have an idea both from a policy side and even some appropriations. It's never too early in these, kind of going into the election years, it's never too early to get started on the process with the early session. And just, obviously, the more we interact, whether it's just on phone calls or emails or whatever, however we choose to interact to make sure we're better briefing you, we'll get to better understand some of those issues and you'll better understand where we can help you. So absolutely.
Is there anything that you're going to be able to do to twist the Santa's arm to get us at 300,000 currently in the budget?
We are doing everything we can. Full disclosure, I mean, because, you know, don't take credit that you don't deserve. Our delegation, especially the person that belongs to the same party as him, Representative LaRosa, I know they're working hard on this as well. And so we're, we feel confident, but I mean, it's because we haven't been told no yet until we actually see the numbers. But yes, we're working hard on that.
I thank you for the weekly video and email memos that came updating us of what you guys were doing and what was going on. I especially enjoyed the video portions that, you know, makes it easier to keep up on...
You and my mom, so we got two fans. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other questions?
I'll have some questions after, I believe, Mr. New Street's presenting to.
What?
Is Mr. New Street presenting to?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have some questions kind of for all of you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
You got it.
Thank you.
Olay, Mr. New Street.
Good evening, Council. John New Street, Executive Director of the Osceola Legislative Effort. Good to see you and thank you for what you do here in the St. Cloud and greater Osceola communities. Part of the public record I submitted, and it may have been late, so hopefully you have a copy in front of you, is our priorities. It was sent at the end of session as well, so no changes because we're maybe a week early on the Governor's final decisions. And so I've asked the team to update this after the Governor's actions, but not knowing the crystal ball of what he may do, this is the same document you received at the end of session. The three primary objectives related to bridge at Neo City. Our most successful year to date, should that survive the Governor's pen. Our safe schools and mental health is kind of ambiguous, just because, again, as it relates to the Marjory Stoneman Douglas tragedy a year ago. And so we just wanted to take a defensive position to make sure it didn't hurt us. And so there was some actions on that, as are relayed in the document. And then what was submitted by you all relating to the welding program, that is an ongoing effort, not only through session but post-session, to try to find some funding, either through training and grant programs. The Olay team has reached out to Context and the Department of Economic Opportunity up in Tallahassee. We've reached out, and I personally have worked with the team to connect with the central Florida Career Source on training programs that relate to this, both to examine all options on making this possible, but also to build momentum and understanding as we approach next session, should you continue to put this within our reach. And then a secondary priority relates to the aquatic weed control, which affects our waterways and continues to be funded on a universal standpoint. So the others gave you the comprehensive update. Mine's a little more specific, because Olay, again, is the aggregator. So we are not your primary lobbyists. You need folks like the folks who presented before me. What we do is we bring those top priorities from, and this is not done anywhere else in the state of Florida, which helps Osceola stand out. It's a reason why, over the $380,000 you may have submitted since 2001, which there were some years you were out, but of that $380,000, you've helped draw in over $150 million back into this community from the state legislature. So on any account, certainly the budget I prepared for my organization, that's a pretty good ROI. And some years are better than others, and certainly the challenges are great. So in that sense, the more help you have to safeguard, play offense, defense, whatever it may be, is important. And Olay being the only model of its kind, you know, I wouldn't say pay John New Street $20,000. I don't know how to get it done in Tallahassee. But the team on Olay has been here since 2001 and gets it done. And they work together with your lobbyists to get it done, and that's an important thing. So everything they said about the warrant formation, the sooner they're at your disposal as well, as they have been in the past, answering questions on the transportation needs, et cetera. And so we remain vigilant and responsive as best we can be to help your community be better. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have and defer to my colleagues.
What do you feel like was your greatest accomplishment this past year?
This past year, probably relates to bridge. If it can survive the Governor's pen, that's over 12 million. And so when you look at all the challenges and all, when you talk about a $12 million submission, five of which is recurring, which has been standard, that's still not always easy to safeguard. But a $6 million on top of it, I think that, both financially is obviously the biggest success, but the impact it will have on this community and the difficulty that kind of, to tell that story in Tallahassee, this is technical in nature. These legislators don't always understand what a sensor is or how it relates to manufacturing and fabrication, et cetera, et cetera. And so our team has helped Representative LaRosa and our delegation tell that story and open doors and secure that funding. So we don't have the vote. So again, like Mr. Carmody had said, you know, this is not, the credit is not ours alone. And certainly, we don't have a vote to even make it possible in Tallahassee, but our efforts on that, I think, are quite monumental, and the success shows that.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Cooper.
Okay, I'm going to ask this question. What have you done for the city of St. Cloud in the last year?
In the last year?
Yes.
So I can tell you about, 48 hours ago, I got a call from Mr. Bruce, Doug Bruce, on the Olay team, continuing to pursue the lead on the welding program within central Florida Career Source. In fact, at our Osceola update, the chamber hosted Osceola update. As Ms. Neighbors walked out, I grabbed her by the collar to continue to see what we can do, both within their realm or how we could work together to bring this into their fold, to make it happen here in the community. Typically, what I do is I bring the managers together, get their priorities, and send those to the lobbyists. I've worked harder personally on that particular initiative this year because it's got a more local slant on it, being a training program. And so I personally have been involved on that. But that's been in collaboration with the Olay team and primarily Doug Bruce to find other avenues to help make that priority happen.
I just feel like, or felt like, that we, you, maybe Olay, dropped the ball with the school board in getting all the paperwork and time, timely to Tallahassee.
So if I may address that, and I'll own it, because it does come down to me, I don't write these priorities because I'm not the expert on any of these topics. Because that was a collaboration between the city of St. Cloud and the ASK and the school district and their programs to get that wording, again, my personal involvement, I can tell you, I could probably go back in my records and find five or six emails into your city manager's account. He called me two or three times saying, where are we and what do we got? To the credit of Doug Bruce, he found the contact within the school district, because he's the primary on education for the Olay team. So he was able to navigate the school district and find the proper contact to get that information. So it was not easy. We certainly, I know your city manager asked, I personally asked, and as much as I'd like to say this is my sole focus, it is not. And so, but Doug took it on his own to make sure that we were getting that information to submit and to find all the avenues, which is also why, once we had it in hand, he went straight to Context and the DEO and other avenues to find potential grant funding to make this happen.
Well, I just, I just felt, matter of fact, probably two months ago, I suggested to the city manager that we should get our $25,000 back, because I don't feel like that we got anything done for the last year. I'm sorry.
So, again, it's 20,000. And of that 20,000, historically, you know, in 2003, there was a $9 million contribution for your turnpike access. So, you know, if it's a dollars game, you know, I don't want to go on the back and forth, but you win some, you lose some, but I can tell you the contributions on your, again, it's very symbolic that you have four sovereign entities as part of one group going to Tallahassee and asking...
I understand that. But when we ask you for only one item, generally per year, and we expect that we're going to at least push for it, and I don't see it, then I feel like we got unblissed. You didn't help us. So that's where I'm coming from.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Mr. New Street, did you just say 2003 we got the turnpike? Because that happens since I've been on council. So I know that that was one or two years ago, and Olay's lobbyists were directly responsible for us getting that turnpike interchange. I mean, that was Mr. John Johnston and his relationships with the people up in Tallahassee. And I know I worked with him directly on that. And to me, that, I mean, that's a game changer for us. And I agree, like, every year, you're not going to, it's not guaranteed every year. I mean, so I feel like that $9 million estimated interchange, which I have seen the draft layouts for the interchange, it's happening. I mean, it's being designed right now. And that's, you know, that's like a big deal. Like, John Johnston and I reached out to DOT and, because I wanted to get something in writing, like, you know, it was all great, like, everybody just verbally tells me, but I'm like, I want something in writing that says, yes, this is coming, and here's your obligation, here's our obligation, here's what you're going to get. So working with that and the city manager, we got that done. So I mean, I feel like that turnpike interchange, I mean, was just a slam dunk for me. And I realize, like, not every year, you're going to get the slam dunk, but that's a huge game changer for the city.
Deputy Mayor, if I may clarify, I'm going off historical records, so I've been in this, I've been in the community for five years, I've been at Olay for about three and a half years, I think, three sessions. So I'm going off historical records. I don't even have that listed here, because that is more recent. This goes through 2017.
Oh, you're talking about the one from, the one that we have already.
The one that, the one right there, yes, ma'am, by, where it hits 192 currently.
Yeah, so like, within the last year or two, that's, we got that through the turnpike.
So that's additional, isn't it?
With Mr. John Johnston. So that was a big coup.
And the improvement on Highway 192 was also part of Olay's project.
So if you were to ask historically what our biggest financial victory was on my list, it's $54 million in 2011 for Budinger to Aeronautical on 192. Yes, sir.
What do you feel like the benefits of working with the county and the school board, especially when it comes to things like the center project, are to the city of St. Cloud?
So when you're talking about Tallahassee, it's important to remember that you've got to look at it from their perspective. We, you and I, don't go to Tallahassee and get to vote. We elect people to represent us. And so how do we make their voice stronger? How do we make their influence greater? And Olay is the perfect example that if I'm a representative and I go into a community in Broward County, where I come from, we had 31 cities, so for any one of those representatives going to the leader's office and say, I got, this city wants this, and this city wants that, it's, you know, it's tough to, tough to understand, which is why you need help. But when you all come together, and our representatives go into that leader's office and say they all agree, makes it very simple to understand and say, let's get that off the table and reprioritize this or that. So it, and we could also look at that historical record to see how much more we accomplished together than, we still accomplish things without your participation in those few early years I was here. But we don't have, we're accomplishing so much more together now that you're back in. So it is important, it is noticed.
Councilmember Trace.
Bill, did you have something you want to say? You look like you're getting ready to say something.
I was just gonna, if I could address Mr. Cooper. Mr. Cooper, Olay is a committee of the school board, Osceola County, and the city of St. Cloud. And Mr. New Street's the executive director of that. And I am the chair of Olay this year. And I will assure you that I will push those priorities harder, and we did. I think we partnered. In fact, my staff architect and my building official went out and assessed the 17th Street building over there to become an advanced manufacturing, advanced welding training facility. So we did all the legwork, so we've got the numbers now to go after that harder next year. But we'll continue to pursue grants. And again, as chair of Olay, I'll assure you that we're gonna push harder.
And when you came back in, but Mr. Manzares also had, we worked the contract to make sure that you have equal voice.
And again, it is a vote, so there's three people on that, so if I get outvoted, that's... I didn't, but I could.
No, sir.
Councilmember Trace, your light is on.
So I just think that, you know, last year, I think my first meeting or second meeting, we voted on our priorities for the legislative session, which bills were already filed, committee weeks, I think, had already started. So I think us doing a better job of discussing this early, setting some priorities early, even earlier than now, but at least we're starting at some point. You know, this is our last year of Representative LaRosa, who's on leadership. You know, anything that we can get, let's go for it, let's go for something big. Try to set our next year priorities for, you know, kind of what are our, what's the biggest cost we have coming up that we can go after, some low-hanging fruit, something that's, you know, a priority of the speaker or the senate president, just, you know, ways that we can generate some funds through the state. But I think holistically, you know, we just have to look at our lobbying efforts. It's kind of disjointed now, you know, who, what, when, where, why, and how, you know, what we want our lobbying effort to be, on the national side, on the state side, local, you know, with Olay. Florida League of Cities does a good job lobbying on behalf of the city. So just kind of us putting together, you know, whatever we want the lobbying picture to look like for ourselves. And then just us setting priorities for next year, like, as soon as possible, to where we can start pushing those forward through, you know, through Olay with, you know, whatever priorities we can help set through that, but then also our own with our own lobbying staff. So, you know, I just, the sooner we can get this done, the, you know, the more time we can have to, you know, go up, meet during committee weeks, which I think would be good. I think we did, we did good with having a prior to Olay visit, but then if we can get there during committee weeks to help shape some of these bills, to help push something, some things we want moving forward, play a little more offense instead of defense. That's kind of how I see the picture moving forward for us on the lobbying side.
Do we have any other questions from Mr. New... Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir, just one more thing to that point. Nothing that you submit to the Olay should be just Olay, you should also probably have it with your primary lobbyists. And so we should all be communicating, working together to figure out how to get that done. So we're that force multiplier, and what you bring to us, again, is what's the benefit of the whole county that we can add the added team to get it done, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, Mayor. As you know, last year, we became an entitlement city. I think it's important that we discuss how we want to proceed with federal lobbying efforts. And again, I think that's like jumping into the deep end of the pool without a life preserver. That's gonna take many years to build those relationships. I know Chris's firm does, has a federal lobbying arm, if he could just speak for a couple minutes about that, and maybe something we want to look out for the future in the next year or so, and as we're doing the budget, include that.
You stole my thunder, but...
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'll jump on that in a minute. Go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. As you said, we, in January, our firm made official what was kind of an unofficial partnership we had with the Eris Group, which is Doyle Bartlett and his associates. We actually, I got the first chance to interact with them more than just over the phone on Monday. Dean on our team has known them for a while and helped put together that deal. They have a lot of strong focuses, they have transportation background, they know well city, local government issues, and how to do, how to manage some of those issues that you see, and not just in appropriations, because those are, how do I say this, because I do state, but I follow federal, it's no secret that appropriations or earmarks are something that are very difficult in the last decade up in DC. Where you find value, or at least where I've seen value, for some of our other government clients that also use the federal lobbying is, is, there's a whole lot of agencies that regulate, but also have dispersments that can make that, to your point, an interchange, that can pay for, they can pay for a piece of infrastructure that you otherwise wouldn't have had, and if you make the right call and work the right angle, you can do that. And these guys are great at it. We did the whole deep dive on what they do and asked a lot of probing questions so that we could be able to effectively discuss that if asked, not knowing I was gonna get a question on it. But, yeah, happy to set up, arrange some conversations and calls or meetings as appropriate with that team if you want to further explore that option for some of the needs the city may have.
Well, I think certainly one of the things we need to do is we need to start sooner rather than later if we're going to, and I assume we're gonna continue our relationship with lobbying, so that, you know, we're not behind the eight ball or feel like we're having to rush and come up with a game plan that, you know, we're all in agreement on. I also think the federal need and opportunity is very significant from people that I've talked to. You know, the dollar's there, but it really takes someone who knows what they're doing to be able to navigate those halls, to get that accomplished. So I think that's something we certainly need to think about.
There is, I can say this from, and this is a, not doing federal work, but obviously comfortable discussing it and knowing enough, there is not just our guys that we work, but many in that process that speak and talk about the fact that, given the politics that are at play for a reelection cycle of the current president and a party in control of the House that's not his, there's a lot of pressure for both the House to put forward some kind of budget that he can either sign or veto, and pressure on him to have something done. There's so, not just with our guys, but other folks we met with, there's a belief in DC that there will be appropriations and opportunities, because both sides, parties, if you will, view it as, if nothing gets done, they'll both get blamed, and, you know, perhaps you have a new president and a new house, and neither which is good for the current incumbent, so they obviously want to maintain their status quo. So that's worth noting, but also coming from someone that doesn't do DC like the guys we work with now.
Do we have any other questions? Thank all of you very much. Any other? Hope Bill wants to... Yes, Bill?
I thought, thank you very much, Mayor. I'll be real quick. As I thought about this after I sat down, and then Councilmember Trace brought it up, and I did want to address one thing. Come up earlier in the process, as you saw this year, it's a good suggestion. Dean and I have both have always been in the belief that earlier in the process is better, as you saw how it worked out this year by coming up earlier. Nothing wrong with coming up later as well, nothing wrong with making multiple trips. But the earlier in the process that you can be there, and I'm sure that Chris will agree with me too, the better that we can put you to use of getting you in front of the right people and pushing the agenda forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
City Manager Sturgeon?
Yes.
Is there anything else you need out of us?
No. What I'll do, as far as the budget process, I will bring that when I present the budget, I'll get the numbers for the federal lobbyist cost and add that into the budget for your deliberations.
And then, when are we looking at setting priorities for...
I think, I think it's something that we could, should start discussing next week. I am out, I'm out of town, but I'll ask Ms. Miller to start getting with these lobbyists. Obviously, water infrastructure, I hear that. I think that's what we should really do a big job. And then the advanced manufacturing and welding program, I think that'd be another thing we need to pursue hard. And then any other thing that the lobbyists find through their channels that we think we, that we can ask for in that process.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Actually, I have a question for Chris. So just for my clarification, when you're saying that there's a lot of opportunity in water and water quality, and you said there was like, I don't remember, I wrote down 25 million, but I think that was for septic conversion, which we do have opportunities for that in the city. But are they looking more for like alternative water supply, or is it nutrients, or is there an angle to the water, or is it just...
All the buckets are getting filled, I would predict. So, yeah, thank you for going with that. The total maximum daily load, nutrient reduction, BMAP, they are all getting attention and focus. Septic to sewer, 25 million, if you know anything about that, that process, 25 million, I live in Balden Park up in Orlando, that wouldn't even do half the neighborhood if we were on septic. I mean, it is not cheap to do those conversions, but you have a governor and legislative leaders currently, and I think the leaders that are following them, that buy-in of, if we want to keep Florida, Florida, the Florida most of us grew up with or have come to love, we have to start now and start chipping away at this. And if we're lucky, technologies will improve or what have you, and this will become a more affordable process. So it is, all of it's on the table with a overarching quality discussion of, and preservation, obviously, we recognize the southern part of our state is lacking in water resources, while the northern part of the state has plenty. That's no surprise because of the makeup and the construction, but they're trying to work for those alternatives as well.
So I was on a conference call this week with Mark Delagow, and a representative from DEP, and we were talking about water quality funding that was coming down the pipe. I thought, I think they said like 40 million was what the number was. But at the end of the conversation, the DEP representative made it sound like to me that I don't even know that if this gets funded into the budget, that they're not necessarily even gonna be going and looking for new projects. Like, the projects already needed to have been in, they needed to be in the CFWI, it needed to be in a BMAP, it needed to be, I mean, do you know anything about that?
Certainly. No different than other kind of grant-type processes. A lot of times when they structure the budget for now 2019 through 2020, it's for already requested projects that various agencies have blessed or had a rank sheet or what have you. No different than FDOT, most of the projects in their core budget are already in the five-year work plan. That being said, special, there were 49 million in special projects, i.e., standalone, not part of DEP's budget or anything else, and that would be a standalone appropriation, no different than our revitalization project, which we can explore. Again, we'll have a better idea. We believe the governor will wait till next week to sign the budget. Whenever he signs it and he vetoes or not vetoes some of these projects, if he leads most of the water projects harmless, then that's a clear indication that as long as you can make a cogent argument to get it in the budget, you can bypass some of the DEP. But I think we should take a dual route. I think we should examine what we have and our needs, and if we think it's something that can't wait two or three years, we take our shot. And if it's something we think that can wait, and we'd rather go the route, it's a little, quite frankly, a little safer route, going through DEP and trying to get through their program and working with the legislature to make sure there's enough funding for it. We can go through that. But I bring it up as, DEP's budget in that category is gonna continue to grow under this governor. So for at least the next three years and possibly beyond, you're gonna see a pressure from the governor's office to increase the funding in water quality, septic to sewer conversion. He had a pretty ambitious request, he got a lot of it, he didn't get all of it this go-around when it came to water. And so the more their budget grows, the more of those projects they can fund that come through their pipeline.
So I just want to talk to my counsel and tell them some of my experience, just to keep in mind, is, and when I was on the phone, this phone call this week, one of the things we talked about is money comes to plans. So, like, we have a lot of ideas, but if you don't have a permitted set of plans and construction plans, and it's buildable, you fall down in the, you fall down to the bottom. So we might need to move forward, I mean, get on the list, become like a fighting project, but we need to, like, expend city dollars to do the design and permitting, because they said, they said some slogan on the phone, and I don't know if it's kind of like the governor's slogan, something like more for Florida now, or something like that. But it was, it was kind of like, they want to use the dollars and see something on the ground, not use the dollars and then study it and think about it a few years, and, you know.
Obviously, local buy-in matters, skin in the game, but there is a pressure, and it's, term limits has this effect. They, they don't want to, the corridor project that I mentioned earlier is a rarity, to fund something that this president, this speaker, this governor will not be in office, at least in their present office, when it all comes to fruition. Maybe they'll get their name on one of the roads, I guess, I hope, for their sake. But the, most of it is, they're out of office when these things happen, so there's a pressure to, when it comes to roads, if you want to be outside of DOT's work plan and you come to the legislature, it's, tell me how, it's shovel-ready now. And the same thing with water, tell me how you're gonna improve the quality tomorrow with this, with this funding. So there is that pressure, and it's, and, but you're seeing it from the governor. His mantra has been, what are we waiting for? We know that we have issues here, and the longer we kick the can down the road, the more expensive they'll be. And we may come to a position where it's too far gone on water quality, and where, no matter what you spend, you can never turn back the clock. So he's taken a serious look at that. And the other thing I was gonna say, and I was, where's my hand, is, I was in a League of Cities meeting Friday, listening in on their transportation and infrastructure, and there's a lot of talk about defense and home rule and all that. And what I was advising a few folks in the room that was, I was speaking with, is, League of Cities is always gonna be playing defense for y'all and all the other cities, and on your behalf, we'll do the same. And they get to be the kind of tip of the spear, and we fill in where necessary, unless you guys advise us otherwise, to be more specifically engaged. But there's still a lot of regulations and red tape and what have you that slows down your ability to be nimble, both with your business community, with your residents and others, and to which I would challenge you or request of you is, let's get creative and say, okay, you do what you want with home rule, and we'll play our defense, and we'll do our best to fight a lot of that off, if not all of it. But if you're gonna take that route, well, here's something back at you. Here's something you can do if you want to make less, less red tape at the local level that we have to do just because you guys require it through whatever agency. I don't know what that is, I'm not pretending I have the magic wand and can tell you what that is, but I'm certain if we look at all the processes that we have to follow and the permits and what have you that are required at the state level, there's probably some things that Bill and his staff would say, well, if I could wave the magic wand and make this go away, we could do a lot of things quicker here. And it's probably, you'd find a very receptive audience in Tallahassee, and allows us to at least hold them accountable. If you're gonna try to strip away a lot of our rights, at least give us a few opportunities here to embolden our business community or to support our residents for initiatives they care about. So let's come to the table, whether it's a workshop or something else, or us working with your staff at the city to go through some opportunities of, okay, yeah, we know the folks there, we can explore why that's in place, and maybe we can discuss tweaking it a little, so.
Well, and the other point I wanted to bring up was, because I go after a lot of grant funding and a lot of things in my career, is partner. So it always looks like a stronger ask if you can partner with multiple entities, like you can come with the school district and the city and the county and, you know, like, everybody's pulling, I mean, it doesn't have to be those people, but, you know, if you can come with regional partnerships, that also seems to have a lot of weight, too. Like, if it's not just benefiting one entity, if you can tie it in...
100%. Partners make it a lot. Not easier, but it gives you some momentum that's important in the process.
Councilmember Trace.
And to help with our effort next week or the weeks after for some of the priority setting, I just kind of jotted down some notes, and if we could kind of put together the who, what, when, where, why on some of these, and then we can try to organize that in some shape or fashion. And I'll give these to you afterwards, but redevelopment, affordable housing, senior housing and other senior-related issues, job training, business and job creation, infrastructure, and then, as Chris mentioned, regulation of just some key things, that maybe we put some ideas together, just kind of have it up on the wall of, if issues come up, let's put it on that list, and then we can, if you got, if staff says that, hey, these are the needs based on, you know, what's going on in the city, what you see going on in the state and the fed, federal level, and then also what needs we have on capital planning or water, the stopper funding, you know, we can, we can start organizing that way. Because I think, last time I have my, the working list from the end of last year, when we went through, and it was just kind of a smattering of more or less projects, instead of like, here's the big goal we want, and then here's the specific ask we can go for. So I just kind of want to try to organize the best we can.
Sorry, I have one more comment.
Go ahead.
Because I think last year, when we met, I met with them before session to kind of kind of brainstorm, like, what's, what's the idea de jour, and like, this past session was workforce, wasn't it? It's like jobs, creation, and, and so, we were trying to, I mean, I know you felt like it was an unorganized list or whatever, but it, you know, we were trying to kind of, that's where the welding came from. That's when I had the city manager meet with Community Vision, and we were trying to, you know, help people have a better life and do those things. I mean, so I think it is, we do try to kind of tailor it every year.
And I would encourage you to be nimble, too. It, it is, this governor is clearly not going to slow down. And speaking with the staff about, kind of, I joked with one that is pretty close to friends, I said, does it slow down a little after the budget? I mean, you know, get to see the wife and the kids? Nope. They, they've already mapped out a lot of things they plan to do between now and when committee weeks get rolling. And, but the good news for us on that, other than we have an active governor that's trying to do good things for Florida, is he'll be signaling priorities. And so, we can take our cue or not. If he, if it's a priority that actually has some synergy with something we care about, now we know we're going to have someone that's not likely to veto what we want. And if we can get in front of the right people and make the case, we might actually have them throw it in his budget, or, or put some, some effort behind it. And, and also, he may signal some things we don't like, and then we have an opportunity to at least know what's coming and start working in ways to make sure that the city's as best can be inoculated to some of those. So, those are, those are some good news. But again, my point in telling you that is, as we get closer to session, things will pop up that we couldn't have possibly thought of, because no one mentioned it or thought it was possible, and then now it is possible, and we have to address it and jump on it quickly.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank all of you. Appreciate your coming and being here tonight. Thank you for your input. Thank you for your service. We're very grateful. We'll move on to our next item, that's discussion of our LDC amendment. Do y'all need to take a break, or are you doing all right?
Keep going.
Do you need to take a break?
Get her done.
You doing all right?
Keep rolling.
Let's rock and roll, then.
Get her done.
Councilman Askew.
So, before we get rolling here, we gave, when they came up before about the sign ordinance, and the, and the commercial folks came up here, and they were, it was pretty crowded in here. And we told them that we would notify them that, that we would be having this meeting. Well, I think we did a little oopsie-doodle. We notified them that there would be a meeting tomorrow, but not tonight. So, three of the people I reached out to did not notify. I talked to Fernando and some other folks, and none of them knew that this meeting was happening tonight. They thought it was happening tomorrow. So, I don't know if we want to have this meeting again, or discuss it, but I think that they should be a part of it.
Oh, yes.
And Terry.
I'd rather not go through the whole thing and then go through it again.
Right. And, yeah, I think Code Enforcement's here. I don't know if she's got anything more to say to it, but I just kind of heard that late this afternoon, started calling people as fast as I could to see if I can find out what their thought was. You want to let Terry?
Terry Sparkin, City of St. Cloud Code Enforcement Supervisor. I did send a letter out stating there was going to be a meeting tomorrow night. In the letter, I also told them that prior to the workshop, because I wasn't sure if they were able to speak, to shoot an email to the city clerk's office, or to myself, excuse me. And I didn't get anything back, except for today. And I didn't realize the meeting had changed until I got the things to do yesterday. So, and I know that night, we had over 50 people here, and they were very upset. They wanted to come in, at least voice their opinion, give you some ideals. And then when I told them they wouldn't be able to spoke, speak, I didn't think they could. Then they were supposed to send the letters. So, now they're just figuring that the city did something on purpose to where you wouldn't have their input. So, I said I would mention that tonight.
I'd rather not do it twice.
No.
But we've already had so many issues, and we did our job twice. And then they've been notified in two different letters. And now, we're at that point, they're, it's looking bad on the council, that they changed it, even though it was the city manager's issue. And we got a lot of rebuttal back on it. So, it's your choice, but just my opinion.
Well, I'm saying, put it off. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I don't want to do it tonight and then do it again. I'm saying, I want to do it twice, so.
Is it just the sign ordinance? Are we talking about others, some other, I see residential architectural standards and PUDs?
I think that's a different issue.
Okay.
Okay, just my opinion. Thank you.
Is that the pleasure of the council that we postponed this issue?
The lighting?
The lighting piece.
Yes.
And I'd like to take public input, too, during whatever workshop meeting, whatever we have about it. Because I know sometimes we don't during workshops.
Well, and I do have a question. I mean, I know that people did show up to the meeting and were upset, but I have had twice as many people in support of it. So, I mean, I know we're notifying people who got a code enforcement, so that's just going to stack the deck in a certain slant. So, I don't know how we get the word out, like, to everyone.
Let me think about that. We'll figure how we can reach out.
I'm just bringing up the issue that.
No, I mean, I agree that, I agree that, you know, that's an issue. I mean, maybe put it in the utility bill or something. I don't know, but, but I mean, I've had overwhelming response on the other side.
We had them for both sides, man. We had them on both sides, just as much for it, just as much against it. But I have the whole list already, and the envelope's made. If we have to send some letters out to the ones that were violated, we can make it any date that's convenient for you, and I can send out the notices. And we can put it on the agenda, plus make people be aware of it. Because there wasn't that many. It was mainly the barber shops, the electrical sign issues, and the flashing lights in the windows. And on the flash and lights, probably 95% of them are already in, in correction. They've already said it. It was just the, the electrical signs that we had issues still with, and some of them that want to have the lights downtown and on 10th Street. So, those lights were a concern down at, Crappy Bill's was a concern. The lights going across the road, we've got several complaints on that, since we've already sent out the letters. So, I mean, it's going to be a lot different at this next meeting. They just want their input to be heard, and they agree there needs to be changes because of the safety issues. Everybody that comes from Kissimmee on Neptune Road to Canoe Creek Road, and the lighting, I mean, when it's raining or it's late at night, it's really bad. The businesses that have the lights flashing on 192, going back towards Melbourne, stuff like that, if they're flashing all night long, and they're even starting turning them off by nine o'clock, and if they're off, that makes a big difference. So, we, we had told them some of the things, they could make a suggestion, and that would not alleviate them, because they felt like, by the way the code was, it was so strict, it was going to make them have to remove their signs. We tried to explain, you don't have to remove your signs, you just have to comply with the new ordinance. So, I think once they started, and in the letter, I wrote, please, before you come to that meeting, read the complete ordinance. Have it into, something to every councilperson, what you want to see changed. And I just think with the dates changed, I thought they could just bring them and drop them off. I don't know. But today, I got a lot of yelling out, you know, because they just found out about it.
Right. I, I totally get all that, but I'm just saying, the people that you're going to send your letters to are who? The people that got code enforcement?
Got violated, but.
Right.
But, but.
That's my point. It's stacking the deck.
Okay. But the only thing was, I have.
I think the council has to make a decision whether you're going to talk about this issue or not tonight, because you're getting way up the stream into a lot of things, and it's frankly not fair to those people who, who aren't here, if you want them to be here as they are. So.
I, actually, sorry, I have one question for council. Do you feel like we need to have staff have like an education session with people? Like, if, if, a lot of it is that they're not understanding, because I know some of the people that got up in the meeting that we had, were, were confused about, you know, like, I know one gentleman got up and was saying, you know, pole signs, and if I got to take a pole sign down, and everybody's got to take their pole sign down. And I was like, that's not what the ordinance says, you know, like, and he was very upset about it. And I'm like, but that's not what it says. Like, should we have like an education session where people can come in and?
I, I hand-delivered every second letter, and I, I gave them a copy of the ordinance, and I spent 30 minutes with everybody. And if they were in that shopping center, and they would say, hey, my neighbor needs to know, she didn't get a letter, can you explain to her? So, I spent four days, up to four days, I believe, going to every businesses on 192. I went down, I didn't go to Crappy Bill's area. I went down 10th Street from Walmart, all the way down to Narcousie Road. I did all of 192. I went to the concrete plants that we're having issues with. So, I spent almost a whole week talking to everybody and tried to educate them. Even, like I said, Code Enforcement will have a workshop if we need to, and everybody that has a business, send them a letter that is in violation or have lights, that they want to come and talk about it. But I have most of the paperwork if you need it. Thank you.
So, I, I think the issue is that we're going to roll this over to a future workshop, and that we get the word out to supporters and non-supporters, say as much best as we can. And we're going to let them come and offer input at that workshop?
Well, I would like us to have, like, maybe an educational session, not at a workshop or a council meeting, like, an educational session to kind of like explain the ordinance, because it is, it's a lot to digest, for sure. I know we worked on it for like six months.
Mayor.
That, that wouldn't be hard.
Councilman Askew.
Well, I kind of like that idea, that it might be Code Enforcement doing an educational or with staff, kind of the same thing, before it ends up coming back to us. They'll take the information, compile it, give suggestions, things like that.
And we'll put it in the utility bill. We'll do social media press release. We'll make sure that we do a better job. I'm sorry. We'll do a better job notifying the public. We'll put it in the utility bill. We'll do social media, you know, direct reach out.
So, you're talking about like a, a teaching session first?
A workshop for the public. They come in and we educate them on the ordinance.
Like, Code Enforcement does the workshop?
Code Enforcement, Mr. Anderson, his staff.
And then they end up kind of, oh, we're getting a nod of no over here.
Respectfully, I disagree. If we start doing workshops for the public on every code amendment, we're going to need more staff to do that, because everything that we do in our land of the code is complicated. And we have staff during the daytime that we can answer questions, but to then decide that you need to hold individual workshops on each of the code items, it's a little bit of a challenge.
I, I disagree, Mr. Anderson. I think for this one instance, it is a big dis deal.
This is not.
It impacts our commercials and our business owners, so I'd like to go ahead and go ahead and do that.
We'll do it.
Just one or two night meetings.
I, I agree with you, though. I mean, I get what you're saying.
And we've done this before, and other things, we did it with the vision, we've done that with the public. We could do a morning session and evening sessions, so business owners can work around their schedule, and make sure they have all the facts in front of them, and, and provide assistance.
So, Mr. Anderson, you're saying we don't bring this up to you every week for a new special thing, is what you're saying?
Well, I don't think this is our, our standard operating procedure with, with major changes, but this is a one we certainly want to get right.
Sure.
Definitely an oddity, and I think we owe it to our commercial.
Yeah, we don't want to go out, we don't want to leave here with your tire slashed or anything.
They wouldn't do that. They're professionals.
So, where we at? Are we on St. Paige here? Do you know what?
We will set something up.
You're going to take care of it?
Yes, sir.
You know what we're asking for? Are you all ready? Ma'Gurn.
Whoa.
Wait a minute.
But I'm okay with that, but.
I said, are you done?
We have the architectural.
Go with that one.
All right, let's move on with the architectural.
There's some people tearing out of here.
Do you have to resend that?
I'm going to resend my German.
So, the item that we, again, Andre Anderson, Planning Zone Director, the item that we want to talk about tonight is the residential architectural standards that is being proposed. I'm not sure what you received, I'm not sure if there's any backup that you received. Yes, okay, great. So, we have some general areas that we will be looking at. Staff has already begun some research and looking at other municipalities' standards for architecture. And so, I just wanted to just briefly cover the areas that we're looking at. One, of course, is the variety of products to have the difference in style and architecture of building facades primarily. Of course, the, the purpose of this is to ensure that we start addressing aesthetics. I mean, when we did for the non-residential architectural standards, it was about aesthetics and how the city looks. And as you might know, the county has already begun that process of looking at architectural standards. And so, we want to also mirror some of what the county is doing, and make sure that we're at least somewhat consistent with their standards, and take the best of what we see in other areas around the central forty area, and maybe even around the state. So, the things that we're looking at is, again, the variety of product type, look at the elevations of facades, look at garages, how they appear, so that they don't, you're not seeing just, you know, this mass of garage doors, but that it, it has some, you know, be able to reduce the visual impact of the garage doors on buildings. Also, look at driveways, because many times you see just all pavement, you know, of asphalt or some of the material, whether it's driveway asphalt or concrete. So, we want to make, figure ways to, to dress that, so that it's more pleasing visually. Also, we'll look at massing and the composition of, of the actual buildings themselves, as far as how they look and scale of the building, so that the doors and windows make sense on the building, and it's not out of proportion. Other things that we're going to be looking at as well is also windows and doors, how they're placed on a building. For instance, in many instances, you could have instances where a window on the side of a house may look out of, out of, out of scale, or doesn't fit the overall shape of, of the building. So, we want to look at how we address that. So, if a building sits on a, on a T-intersection, for instance, that when you're looking down that road, you're seeing something that kind of makes sense, that's not just an one-off, you know, window stuck off to the corner. So, we're hoping we can address those types of things. Also, we'll look at roof line, building roof lines, whether, you know, has some kind of repetitive motion, or whether it has some kind of scale, again. Want to address storage, storage on, in homes, as far as, you know, whether they have accessory structures and so on. Air conditioning, which is something we've already talked about in many of our water waste report agreements, want to make sure that they, we, we address that, and it's consistent. And then we'll also talk about compliance, and how the developer is responsible for ensuring that these standards are, are brought about. Part of the, the update also, we'll, we'll also have architectural design as far as images, so that we say, do this, don't do this. It makes it a little easier to understand. So, we want to make it very user-friendly, and not just have words, we want to have all sorts of images throughout, so it makes it a little easier to interpret. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Love it.
Councilmember Matheny.
So, this is for new homes?
Yes.
So, does this apply, like, if someone is doing something to an existing home?
Well, we have not necessarily talked about, you know, we've always added a provision that if you do over a certain percentage, then, you know, in terms of nominees, in terms of square footage for non-residential, but we can definitely explore how we address existing homes, if they're making significant changes to the facade of the building.
And this would not apply to the historic district?
So, this is supposed to be a county-wide, I mean, I'm sorry, citywide standard. We are also looking at how we address architectural standards, which are kind of separate, because it's hard to apply some of these standards to architectural buildings, because then if you start to meet some of these standards, you would, you know, affect the architectural integrity of the building.
Right. That's what I was thinking, like, it might not cover the historic district. I had a couple thoughts when you were going through your list. Is this going to cover materials?
That's something, that's something that we briefly talked about that wasn't, wasn't in this presentation, but yeah, we do want to add, like a color palette and materials.
I had color palette on here, too. Yeah. And then, I wanted to have a clever name for the gigantic garages. Is that in here?
Accessory structure.
Well, I wanted to say like a McMansion, but use it for like a garage, and I couldn't think of something. But I know it says adequate storage, but I mean, I get complaints all the time from these garage, you know, structures that are going up around town. And I know they're still working through loopholes and doing things in, in our code, but I didn't know if it covered that. And then, I know materials is very important to me, like, you know, you pass by, and I know we're talking residential, but you know, you pass by commercial, and it's just like metal buildings, and you're like, why do they have the same business on Lake Nona? And it's brick and stone and beautiful, and we get shanty town down here. Like, what, you know, how is that happening? But I know, like, even I just sent something to the city manager not too long ago, that somebody put a fence up in the grid, and it's sheet metal. And that's allowed, at the time that they got that permit, because our fencing permit didn't cover materials. And I'm concerned from a safety aspect, when a hurricane comes through, and that sheet metal starts whizzing through the neighborhood, you know, is somebody going to get hurt from that? But there's no, there was nothing in our, there will be. But at the time, there was nothing in there. So, I mean, materials, gigantic garages, and then, I don't know if the residential architectural standards is the place to put it, probably not. But I was just thinking about the, you know, prohibition to convert garages into rooms. I know you say that that's not allowed, but I feel like I see it. So, that was it. And paint colors, but you covered that.
All right. On top of what Deputy Mayor Matheny brought up, I know this is a draft, and it's kind of an outline, but just specific standards, to where it's kind of cut and dry of do these things. Implementation timing as well, because I'm sure it can't happen overnight.
Yes, we would have some sort of amortization, I guess, for, if we, if we make, say that, you know, these are non-conforming, which I've got to talk with the city. which I've got to talk with the city attorney about that, how we, how we do that.
Yeah. Windows in the garage, that really does make a, a big difference. So it's either split the garage doors or put windows in it. Glazing requirements, I know City of Orlando has fifteen percent of each wall needs to be glass. Banding around windows always helps with, you know, different paint color. Something I didn't see on here, but it kind of alluded to for the air conditioning equipment is where do folks put their trash cans? It's more of a HOA thing, but I, I see them out in front of houses. And then do we have different standards if they have wider setbacks of, or like a rural type neighborhood of, you know, do you want, if you have, you know, in certain areas, if someone wants to do quarter acre, half acre lots, do you have the sidewalks on both sides of the road and F-curb? Or is it, you know, the, the typical city, city neighborhood? Or can you have something with a little bit more rural feel in some of those areas outlined in the Envision Saint Cloud of, you know, that, that old-timey looking neighborhood areas?
Right, so we, we can have context-sensitive designs. Say if you're in the suburbs, this is what you do. In the more rural country areas, you can have these set of standards.
Because, yeah, if it's townhomes or, you know, small lots, then it, it needs to work a certain way because you need to fit the, the puzzle pieces in and stagger your, your AC units. But, you know, some of these other areas might have just a little bit different standard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, well, Keith usually says something that like triggers some, some thought that I.
That's why I let you go first.
I know, and then it's like back and forth, sorry, Nathan. But I was thinking about the trash cans. That's a, that's an important consideration because like the neighborhood I live in, you have to put all your cans in the garage. And I have a two-car garage, well, guess what it becomes? A one-car garage when I have to put three cans in my garage, you know? So I mean, I think that is kind of something to think about. If we had the builders designate an area on the property and screen it and, you know, make it for the trash receptacles, that would help us with the parking potentially because it would free up the garages. And one thing I had talked to the city staff about before, and maybe Keith has some experience in this on his side, was like, I was at my brother's house one day and I'm standing in his garage and I was like, why does your garage feel so big? You know, like so much bigger than my garage. Well, he had a bigger garage door. And so he was saying it makes it easier to bring the two cars in, you know? Because if I actually had to bring two cars into my two-car garage, they would have to be little like Priuses or something to actually get them in. But they do make like a larger set garage. Yeah, and then they were saying too, like, maybe the way people used to historically get two-car garages was they were split garage doors. I mean, they were literally two garage doors that you could drive in, you know? But, so I don't know if maybe that's something to take into consider. I know it makes a bigger garage door, but at least it would get people maybe parking in their garage versus not wanting a door ding themselves.
Councilmember Rasko?
Yeah, talking about garages, we were actually looking at houses, I think it was the, in Kindred or something, or maybe it was Mannamy. When you go in the garage, it's actually five feet of space that hits the wall, which we noticed that that is, wasn't the norm of the new houses. But this particular house, you walk in the garage door and there's a ton of room off to the side. So I don't know if that's just a particular builder, but that could be some kind of standard. The other part is we, when we talked about sustainability for the city, mother-in-law suites. We still, I guess, we're, we're against mother-in-law suites, but that could add a lot to the city.
So we have accessory dwelling units as an item that's been on our list for a while. But we currently do not permit accessory dwelling units, but it is something that we have on our list of things to bring back at some point.
So even a new home that came into the city, are they allowed to have a mother-in-law suite?
No.
Right, that's what I mean. So there is some realtors and developers out there that would be wanting to do that. Especially there's even these houses in Kindred, for example, where we didn't even have Pine Grove come in front of us. But that particular builder builds a three-car garage with a mother-in-law suite. And when I got talking to the realtor there, I'm like, I, I don't think that that would be allowed in our city. It's a beautiful product. I would actually be for that product, but we can't have it in our city because we don't allow it.
Well, the older we get, the more interested we might be in there.
I'm sorry, I got one more.
I think it's a great asset.
One more thing. I thought at the last workshop, and Chris maybe can correct me, but I thought when we talked about mother-in-law suites, we were all sitting down there at that workshop. I thought we all, like, there was a consensus that we were okay with it. As long as there was adequate parking and as long as, as long, I thought as a council, I mean, maybe I'm recalling that wrong, but I thought we, when we were sitting down there and one of the last things, I mean, the, we were like, hey, yeah, let's look into it in the last go-round. No one remembers that? Well, I don't think it was action, I think it was workshop, but I think we all kind of said, like, we were open to it. Did I dream that?
You dreamed.
Okay, I thought we all said we were okay with it, but who's for it?
We'll check this.
Yeah, I remember we, we talked a little bit about it, but I don't know if we got a general consensus.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, especially the builders, these, they're building a three-car garage on a sixty-foot lot over in Kindred and it's starting at three hundred and seventy-two thousand, they sold all of them. And they would like to make more of them, but they didn't really think that that would be a sellable product, now it is. So.
I think as long as the parking is, is adjusted.
Right.
You know?
Well, it's a three-car garage too.
Or who your mother-in-law is.
Right, that's a big part.
Any other input?
So is there consensus that we need to look at ADUs or not?
To look at what?
ADUs, accessory dwelling units. The mother-in-law suites.
Sure, I'm, I'm for it.
Councilmember Trace?
While we're at it, you know, possibly ways to incentivize connectivity, incentivize some of the infill in some more downtown areas or redevelopment of the downtown areas. So I don't know if you do that with different development standards, building standards, impact fees, all, all the mix. But that's something, ADU is one of those things of, all right, how do you, you know, create an extra housing unit more affordable and, you know, reduce, you know, just kind of sprawl? You, you put a little more density into it, so just different strategies.
Are you guys done? Are we done, guys?
No.
Well, Andre, are you through?
Well, we have one more item.
Yes, go ahead and.
So the other item was brought up at our last council meeting and by Deputy Mayor Matheny about PUDs. And we weren't completely prepared to talk about it, but we, but city manager asked us to put it on this agenda to kind of bring it up. So what we looked at real, was trying to get an idea of our PUD standards and then do a comparison with other jurisdictions around the area. More specifically, the jurisdictions that we looked at as part of Envision Saint Cloud. And so one thing that we discovered was that in our code, we had a minimum requirement that was removed back in two thousand and five. It was for twenty-acre minimum for PUDs. And our PUD standards, of course, is limited to two different types, residential PUDs and commercial PUDs. And one of the things that we are thinking about needing to do is to streamline the process. Because right now we have is a PMP, which is Preliminary Master Plan as part of the PUD rezoning, and then a Final Master Plan. And many times what you see before you is the Preliminary Master Plan, which is more of a bubble plan. It's very vague, has just general, you know, layout of the bubbles, if you will. And then may have like a development program that identifies what is being proposed. Square footage of non-residential uses and number of units. And so that's something that we need to look at as far as, one of the questions that was raised, that there's not enough detail to give you at that comfort level while you're approving this. So of course, as you know, one of the reasons for PUDs is to create innovative design. So you have things more interesting, that it's more sustainable, that meets the city's needs as well as the developer's needs. And is something that's aesthetically pleasing. So as I said, we looked at Osceola County and we also did a few cities to kind of get an idea of what others do. And the, there, it kind of goes in all different directions. It's not really that consistent, and I'll just go to the chart right, right away. So in Osceola County, they also do a bubble plan, but they also have some other details along with it as far as development program, program and phasing, which we sometimes do in the Preliminary Master Plan. But they also have site development standards, they have right-of-way parking, landscape signage, open space and traffic report. That's all part of their master plan for, for, for their bubble plan. So they do go into some level of detail initially. For the city Claremont, they have quite a bit of detail as part of their PUD land use, what they call a land use plan. And that's very similar also. As far as Oviedo, they also go in, in some, some level of detail as well. So as far as cities goes, the two, those two cities go into some, in some level of detail. For Winter Springs, they also talk about preliminary phasing and they also do a transportation analysis and economic analysis. And also look at the, the blocks in terms of pedestrian orientation. So there is some range of, of things that we can look at as far as whether we want to eliminate the Final Master or combine it and just make it one thing and, and require a certain level of detail to begin with. So it's kind of your call at this point, how you, how you want to go.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I had brought this up to Mr. Sturgeon about concurrency. Maybe the city could start concurrency with large homes or PUDs and a lot of homes that are being built. In concurrency, you could have a myriad of everything. Make sure that we get the, we get the four-lane road at the same time as you're getting ready to build. We got concurrency up in Orange County, I believe.
So you're talking about transportation concurrency?
Yes, transportation, that's, that's the biggest problem. I think people are complaining right now, that I hear, on a daily, on a daily basis. It's kind of like, is this too many people on the, on the road and there's not enough, not enough roadway? So if we could get concurrency that the city, and I think all you have to do is just change the, what is it, the comp plan. I think that would take three months or so and we could make a determination of, through a workshop, of what you want to come up with builders that would have to help to pay when they're putting fifty or a hundred homes or a thousand. That would be a percentage you would have to pay for roadway and stuff like that in concurrency. I think they've already got it up there in Orange County, so I think we ought to, yeah, smart thing to take a look at.
We, we will look at it and come back and get back to you on that.
Okay, sure appreciate that.
Councilman Matheny?
Well, thanks, Andre, that was like super quick to turn that around, but.
I thanked my staff though.
Thanks, staff, you really, you really knocked it out of the park.
Made it quick, made it quick.
Made it in school all week, so.
I, I mean, I like the idea of concurrency, but I, I guess I'll look to Dan Manzares because back in the day when I was doing development plans fifteen years ago. I mean, that was, the process was concurrency. Like, everybody came and sat at the table, the school district, the fire department, you know, all the different entities. And, you know, they basically said, here's what you have to do. You have to, the school is overcrowded, you have to like resolve the school issue, you have to do this, you have to do that. And I think it was a much better system, but I thought the state preempted all of this. Like, I, I didn't think we were allowed to have concurrency. And I thought that, but I thought that then in place of you have to fix this road, then you get impact fees. I thought, I don't know, maybe he can do his legal analysis of that, but I thought that the concurrency went away.
Not, concurrency went away because of an event referred to as the Great Recession. Concurrentty went away because local governments and their estimation were trying to make it, were trying to basically spark the economy and development because it essentially died, as we all know. And so concurrency was a, from many, from the developer's perspective, was an, was an obstacle to planning, developing, getting entitlements for new construction, new homes especially. So for a certain extent, to a certain extent, that's when a lot of local governments went away from concurrency. The legal analysis tied to it is that concurrency isn't, is, is an appropriate legal method to put in place as long as you have a reasonable, rational, proportionate share component. That's how, that's how it makes it fair. So a developer, as Mr. Cooper said, you really can't make a developer say, you can't tell them, you can't build your property until this road is built without giving them a rational, reasonable opportunity. Say, no, you can build your property, but you're going to have to contribute something beyond.
As long as we get our concurrency built.
So that's where they get into a legal defensibility perspective that you, because you can't, the law says you can't basically tell anybody that owns their property, you're going to make it so cost prohibitive to them that they can, you have to give them an option to basically to address it. And so you can get in that direction, but it's usually done on a particular, on a particular basis. Whether it's, transportation is probably the most obvious one because it's the hardest to control. I would just suggest to you that when we do get into concurrency, and Mr. Cooper, you and I mentioned it briefly before this meeting, talked about it. When you're talking about a city establishing transportation concurrency, it becomes, it can be looked at as a very difficult, difficult obstacle for a property owner to overcome because the city only controls a certain amount of roads. We have no control over certain roads, we have no control over county roads, we have no control over state roads. So we have to be very careful about what we make developers do from a concurrency perspective, which they really can't accomplish or we can't help get accomplished because we have no jurisdiction over the improvements that we're going to make them do. So that's when you sort of get into a little bit of balancing act of it all. But we certainly is, can look into trying to address it and do it. But really, it went away not necessarily because the state prohibited it. It went away just from a practicality perspective. Entities were trying to kickstart the economy.
Can we look at Orange County or where, I think that's where they.
Well, Orange County does, concurrency does work, and I guess my point is concurrency works better on a county-wide basis than it can on a, on a city basis, especially when it comes to transportation. Because as you, as you know, we, we really, here in the city, we have very few true city roads. Even the road, even, we have county roads.
But you can always look at it a different direction. You don't necessarily have to make it for roads.
Well, there's, yeah, you can, you can do transport. We typically, you know, from a water and sewer perspective, we really essentially have concurrency.
Right.
From a water and sewer perspective, because we typically don't, we don't give water and sewer out unless there's a, there's capacity to do that. And if, and if there's a requirement to have, to have infrastructure in place, the infrastructure is required as part of the development or part of a water and sewer utility agreement if we're doing one of those. So we really essentially have what is concurrency. You can't, you can't build without water and sewer connection to do it. So we have that. And then if you look at, you know, then we have impact fees that address some of the other issues that deal with it. But transportation is really, is really always been the main focus when it comes to concurrency in the city side. You know, there's school, you know, seats in schools and that's a different issue, which is something that the state came in and preempted on, on school capacity as concurrency requirement. And, and, and so that may be what, that may be where you, what you were kind of thinking, where the state did come back in and dealt with that.
Councilman Rasko?
Can't you base, I happen to have up the two thousand and eighteen roadway network capacity report from the county. Couldn't you base your concurrency off of, let's say, Old Canoe Creek Road that's rated an F, for example? And say, we're not going to build on that particular road because it's rated an F, you need to help us get that road. Even though it's not our road, Old Canoe Creek Road is the county road, but we could probably base it under, I'm just picking one, there's a bunch of Fs on here.
See, I was asking, you know, if we can't work with the county.
Could, could it be based under a factual county document that they've paid for and we didn't have to pay for it?
Well, it, it, to answer your question, Mr., it could be.
It's public records.
It could be. But again, it's all, it's going to depend on the question that you're being asked to answer on a particular development. In other words, if it comes before you on a, on a complaint change, a land use plan, a zoning change, transportation and transportation needs for the prospective proposed, requested new land use or new zoning category are all elements of your discussion. So you can simply look at it and then look at that report and say, I know you guys want to, you want to go from, you know, this number of units per acre to this, to a more dense product, but listen, the road that's going to access issue is an F. So we have a transportation problem, so we're going to deny your an. So we have a transportation problem, so we're going to deny your annexation, I'm I'm sorry, you deny your change of zoning in that particular instance. That's all part of using substantial competent evidence to support a zoning requirement. I think part of the issue comes into is when you have entitled properties that have already been approved and they have the appropriate zoning category and they are already adjacent to or accessed by roads that are failing, it becomes a little bit more difficult because they're able to do that.
That's different, I mean, I'm talking about a new development that comes forward and.
So yeah, so you can, you don't necessarily need concurrency to do that. What you need is good information and rely on this thing and 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 charge your developers at the podium to say, tell us why this, tell us why this is wrong. And tell us why, and oh, by the way, we want to see your transportation study that says why this is wrong.
The only, the only way you're going to get that is with concurrency, to be able to get it, something from that developer to be up here to the podium and have something in writing and says, here's why the roads are, we can keep going.
Well, Andre, what what are our standard, or what's our process for now for asking for transportation impact studies? Okay, we don't, so.
Let's ask for them.
That's, see, but concurrency, if we could tie concurrency and put all this in together, not necessarily that you're just going to get it for a road for the county that we can't help or can get the money, but other ways we can. And I think you, you need to look at Orlando and find out what they're doing and.
And we certainly, we certainly can, but I guess to circle back, I'm sorry, Mr. Trace.
You can get a copy of that and so I could, all of the council members could have.
We can get a hold of what Orange County is doing from that perspective. But to get it back into the discussion that's before you, which is your PUD specifications and structures, you certainly, in any project that comes forward, you certainly can look at and say, we get what you want to do in this planned unit development, but as part of this, you're going to have to give us a transportation study that's going to show this, this and this and this. You're going to have to.
Let me clarify, um when I said we don't require, we do, but it has to be a certain trip that it that it, threshold that it trips before we require.
In terms of density or?
Number of trips, yes.
Okay, well, what, the last, last meeting we had.
Public services has has a standard that says over a certain number of trips.
Well, that's based on the number or whatever the potential construction.
Last meeting we had with Joe Thacker, we won fifteen hundred homes there on a two-lane road. That tripped it.
Councilmember Raskin.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Trace.
Um so on the transportation study, I mean, it it it's not just for a PUD that we would require, that would be for any zoning as well, right? So if it's currently zoned ag in the city, you know, and you want to make it whatever, then you'd have to uh do a a traffic study. Part of this too is, you know, i- if we figure out, and I don't know if there's a certain mechanism for this, but I I know the county has a lot of our major corridors, county or state has a lot of our major corridors that are their responsibility. If we could try to get the developers to put some of the money in the pot to help get some of the local funding for some of these projects to get some state funding, you know, maybe the county doesn't have any money to put in, but if we can help accelerate with some some funds that are, some of these proportionate share or whatever you guys want to talk about, to get some of that local twenty percent match, forty percent match, whatever, we need to get some state money to accelerate some of these projects, these road projects to get them to to move forward. That might be an option. Um kind of coming back to the PUD standards, i- in my mind, when you have to do a PUD, it's either because you're doing a complex mixed-use development or your, your typical straight zoning is kind of failing you. So I think part of what we need to do is, as we're updating our comprehensive plan, update some of our zoning code to make sure that, you know, half or more than half of our projects, you know, the projects that come through are straight zoning and then there is no PUD required. It's, you know, they might do the, a zoning change to go in a certain zoning category, but it matches our comprehensive plan and it moves forward. Um you know, with whatever transportation study or something we would want, but it goes through the zoning code instead of just everything having to be a PUD because nothing really square peg round hole.
And that is um part of the original mission when we talked about updating the comprehensive plan, because we noticed that the straight zoning categories only has one lot size. And so it gives no one the ability to propose a resident development that has different lot sizes based on the zoning. And so the only alternative is to go to PUD. And so everything, everything that's coming forward, because there's only sixty and a half feet lots width, everything has to be a PUD if they want to do something different. And so we, one of the things was, we wanted to look at the land development code to make some adjustments with the different zoning districts that allow for different lot sizes and setbacks. And then if you're not able to meet it on the straight zoning categories, then you go to PD, PUD, if it's something that's more innovative or different.
And maybe it, you know, instead of or in addition to the sixteen questions, um something that shows, you know, part of a PUD is kind of the give and take of they want uh this regulation lesson, but then you you'd make something else greater, but greater uh setbacks buffering, landscape buffers, whatever. So just something that clearly outlines, well, you know, there's the give and the take on on some of this to where it becomes cohesive. Then also I'll bring it up, I don't know if I brought it up, I think I brought it up a couple of times at public meetings of, anytime we have a a zoning change or any of these PUDs, a financial update study, something that shows how this affects the city with some of our budgeting. Um I think we were working up some, you know, over a certain acreage, maybe it's certain zoning changes over a certain acreage. We have to do financial study, transportation study, a- all of these things, you know, put this on the developer to do, but certain studies to make sure that it doesn't, doesn't hurt um the city.
Mr. Manzares.
You know, just going to go back to something Andre said in the first part of his presentation on this is that years ago, there was a restriction on, from an acreage perspective as to PUD projects. And if that was, that was something that was in place, it went away because essentially the city council was considering all these variances, saying where people would come in front of them and saying, yeah, my project isn't twenty acres, it's twelve acres and I want to do a PUD. Will you give me a variance and let me go through the process? And there was a, a lot of those requests at the time. It may be worth reconsidering that because then it would focus certain projects away from the PUD zoning and go towards more of a straight zoning as long as you had available options for them to appropriately develop their project. And so you would, you may be able to get away with it, move it in that direction.
Councilmember Matheny.
Um to tie into something Keith said about the financials, I've been saying that for three years, you know, don't want to bankrupt the city. But I also want to put a caveat in there. I saw some invoices not too long ago and I was really saddened to see the fact that we asked for a financial analysis from a community and then we paid a bunch of money to have a secondary, you know, company vet the financial analysis. I don't really feel like that should be our dime, like if we need a, if we need a second, if we need a, an analysis and a backup analysis, that should be on the developer, not like city dollars to go spend, you know, thousands of dollars to vet the study that we're requiring. So I don't know how the other council feels about that, but I mean, it's like at my job, we'll do appraisals and a and a review appraisal. I mean, that's just part of the business. It's like there was appraisal and then a review appraisal, so. So I think it should be developer, you do a financial analysis and developer, you hire a secondary, you know, I want them to foot the bill for that.
Andre.
I don't have anything else.
Where are we at with all this?
Are you done?
Yes.
No, I just, I was just kidding. I meant with this like.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Is your light not working?
I hit it.
You keep waving, I am.
Well, I'm kind of down here in the bullpen. The um, the idea was just to have some framework and some ideas. Again, I take, I think there's always the opportunity for council to change these on the fly, but I think, I think Deputy Mayor's position was it needs some framework that you guys can look at and go, okay, it meets these criteria. So I was going to ask Andre, if I looked at these four, which one of you would consider as the best practice?
I don't know.
You deal with this stuff every day.
I know. Um well, I mean, clearly, you know, the, the pros and cons of going to more detail is that the developer commits a lot of dollars to engineers or whatever to start going to that level of detail. Then the council says no, so they wasted a lot of money. So that's a concern when it goes too far, too too much detail, so.
It's not enough now.
Mr. Manzares.
I would just tell you that I've had a great deal of experience, obviously, with Claremont's process and it appears to work fairly well. Now, and in terms of they, developers recognize that they are going to have to, they've been, they've learned that they're going to have to provide a certain amount of information on their projects early on in the process that they may not have to do in other jurisdictions. And depending on the value of their project and what they're planning on doing and how important it is to them, they're typically willing to do it. And so um it's a process that worked, can, has worked. And I think that's, and it's very similar to one that they use in Oviedo, which I've also had some experience with.
So so minimum requirements and then suggested additional.
Well, a planned unit development is exactly what it is, so when it comes before you, once they set their their, their their ask, you as a council also have a right to say, that's fine for your ask, we get that, but here's what we want. And that's why you see at least, one perfect example is on the your Claremont column there at the bottom and says transportation study may be required. And that typically what happens there is, and when they come and ask, then staff or the council at the time looks at it and says, I get what you're asking for, but I, but we want to see a transportation study that shows this isn't going to create an overload on some transportation network that serves the project.
But doesn't Lake County do all of the cities in?
Well, they do through the MPO, but they don't necessarily, um but in Claremont, they will, they will require them also to make sure they have that and then they will do some vetting process to them also on certain projects.
Anything else?
So we, so we will look at Claremont and Oviedo.
Okay, I'm good with that.
The more detail, the better.
Yes.
Or at least uses and and densities if it's going to be in a bubble form, but.
Orange County.
More detail, the better.
That's it, I don't have anything else.
Did it? Anything else?
Yeah, get to whack the gavel.
Again.
Do it again, do it again.
You're going to have like tennis elbow for that.
He did it once, he stopped.